Good morning. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting, as always, with an invocation by our very own Vice Chair, Commissioner Vivian Thomas, and then she will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand. Please assume a position of respect. Heavenly Father, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we come before you today as a county, some as leaders and some as constituents and some in other positions all around, but more than anything, we ask for your directions, we ask for your guidance, that we make decisions based upon what we need to do for the constituents of this area. God, our minds, God, our hearts, help us make the right decisions for the people that we serve, protect those who are serving each and every day, our law enforcement and first responders, all those who have a hand in serving our seniors and serving our children, we pray for their protection each and every day. So as we go forth in this meeting, more than anything, put forth an effort of all those who participate to hear each other and hear each other's concerns, and remember that we report to you. More than anything else, we have to give an account of our actions and account of what we do. In Jesus' name, we pray for your guidance. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order. There will be an amendment to the agenda. We're going to add the Mighty Hero Homes presentation to the agenda. And we're going to move the spot, the lost item, um, to the top of the agenda as well. But first, what we're going to be get, do is begin with our Henry County Employees Retirement Recognition, uh, our HR Director, Harold Hooper.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, distinguished board members. Today I come before you to honor two retirees for the month of October. Collectively, they have thirty-one years of experience. The first is Mr. David Lenny, seventeen years of service with the Henry County Fire Department. Next is Ms. Sherry Sandsberry, fourteen years of service with the Henry County Tax Commissioner's Office. We thank them for their commitment to this county, and thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, uh, we have a Mighty Heroes Home presentation. Is Drew Walston here? If you would come forward.
Madam Chair, Henry County Commissioners, it's a great opportunity to be here and present to you. I'll start by saying they, because they deserve better. The statement guides everything that we do and is the motivation behind every action and reaction at Mighty Hero Homes. My name is Drew Walston, the founder and CEO of Mighty Hero Homes and the Mighty Hero Home Foundation. By, by the way, this is probably the most prayed-over Henry County Commission meeting that's ever been held in Henry County. We're so grateful for the opportunity to appear this morning to introduce to you our organization and to share with you why we think partnering with Henry County is vitally important to our mission, to Henry County, to our country, and more importantly, to the military heroes who have so valiantly served our country to defend our freedoms but now need our help. We will use the Henry County Pilot Base location to serve as a model for addressing and solving veteran homelessness nationwide. Mighty Hero Homes is headquartered in McDonough, Georgia, with representatives based here locally and throughout the country. Mighty Hero Homes exists to eradicate veteran homelessness in the United States through implementation over, of over four hundred and fifty-five bases countrywide. These bases will house more than thirty-seven thousand veterans living in our streets, in the woods, on friends' couches, et cetera. Each Mighty Hero Home base will have eighty-four Mighty Hero Home residents, which will include single units, family units, ADA compliant units, geriatric foster care units, and emergency use units. Each base will have an ornamental fencing, will be gated with security, will be well-lit and beautifully landscaped. Mighty Hero Homes will be expertly engineered and construction, in constructed utilizing structural insulated panels, or SIPs. A variety of hardy board siding options, coordinating paint schemes, standing seam galvalune roofs, and other details will make each home rock solid and beautifully appointed. Each twelve-home squadron will have a squadron activity center to promote community and to provide expanded living spaces for base residents. These centers will supply indoor and outdoor gathering, recreation, and fellowship spaces. Each base will also have a six-thousand-square-foot community center, which will house our health services center, our training and career center, a commissary, expanded meeting space, a base coffee shop, et cetera. We will also provide base residents the opportunity to practice commercial gardening, providing fruits and vegetables to local restaurants and citizens, and to serve as a canine service dog foster caregivers and companion dog trainers. We have partnered with outstanding organizations such as, such as Stop Soldier Suicide, Flanders Fields for Drug and Alcohol Rehabilitation, Sierra Delta for Canine Training Support, Southern Belle Farms, and Roots Food Group to provide base residents the opportunity to have two well-balanced nutritional meals each day. It's worthy to note that empirical data shows that for every dollar spent on healthy food options for at-risk citizens, a municipality can save three dollars in public service cost. Organizations like Veteran One will also help prepare our base residents for employment opportunities to help them understand skill gaps and also development requirements. Home Depot has pledged their support to assist in a major way through the construction of our models, as well as the Henry County Pilot Base. Bases will have numerous employment opportunities for on-base residents such as guard gate attendee, commissary clerk, grounds maintenance crew members, drivers of the base's eight-passenger van for transportation of residents to church, jobs, schools, shopping, et cetera. It's the core objective that the Mighty Hero Home Base be a beacon in the communities where they're installed and are a catalyst for the community engagement and a model for responding to this overarching crisis of homelessness. We expect our bases to create generational change and have kingdom impact. Everything we do points to the veteran reestablishing hope by reestablishing, reestablishing connections and a sense of value. Each veteran will be adopted by a local church, school, group, business, et cetera, when they move on to the base, and will be personally welcomed by representatives from these organizations. Through our over-three years of research and working closely with the VA, meeting with a broad range of experts, we know that providing home is just one part of the equation to one's reintegration back into society, but it is a critical component. We want Henry County to be on the leading edge of solving this crisis by being the host county for our pilot base, Mighty Hero Homes Base Zero Zero One, Henry County, Georgia. We need your help in securing twenty-five to forty acres of well-suited land which we, which we'll, uh, we'll build our base on. Henry County will become the epicenter of resolving the veteran homeless crisis and will host visitors from all over the country to see what we're doing here. We will install two model homes in Henry County, potentially on the pilot base or elsewhere within the county. These models will initially be used for filming and presentation purposes, and will eventually, will eventually add to them to form our corporate campus. With proper zoning and permitting, this arrangement of model facilities will be used for meeting space, staff offices, quarters for visitors, and even an emergency shelter when we need to get a veteran off the street or into a secure facility temporarily but immediately. We are working with the two-time Emmy award-winning documentary film crew to document, to document our journey of this egregious stain on our nation, our journey, and our simple act of obedience to the call. The win is no longer just providing a home to the homeless. The lasting benefit of our work will be the impact by creating, the impact created by unleashing scores of highly trained, highly skilled, and motivated heroes throughout the base communities. The entire solution countrywide is a six-to-seven billion-dollar initiative, but this completes the work. The US government has spent over ten billion dollars over the past decade to address the problem, but we've seen little evidence that that work indicates that the one true solution is possible, which is affordable permanent housing. We are vigorously pursuing funding from a variety of sources, but we don't spend much time worrying about funding. We know that he's brought us to this individually and collectively, and he'll provide a way to fulfill his mission. That being said, we are using the skills and talents that he's given us to secure requisite capital, and we're confident that we'll have the resources on hand to break ground in Henry County in first quarter 2023, and in other locations by the end of the year. Beginning in 2024, we plan to manufacture eighty-four homes per week and install scores of bases each year until the last homeless veteran is handed the keys to their Mighty Hero Home. We have met with and are meeting regularly with local, state, federal elected officials, pastors, business leaders, VA liaisons, successful nonprofit leaders such as Bruce Dill of the Atlanta City of Refuge, and most importantly, veterans. We have two veterans on our staff, Lieutenant Colonel Charles Jackson and Navy Corpsman Josh Gannon. We're so grateful for their service then and now. We have numerous veteran advisors, which include a retired federal judge and a retired two-star Major General. We will continue to prioritize veteran partnerships and relationships. While I don't know the secret to success, I do know the secret to failure, and that's not doing what we've been called to do. We therefore stand humbly before you today and ask for your assistance in helping Mighty Hero Homes do what no one has been able to do yet by their own sweat and toil. We will give credit where credit is due. With all thanks and glory going to him. I'd like to now introduce you to Master Sergeant Patricia Basden, a Bronze Star, Afghanistan Disabled Veteran, and Chief Executive Officer of Southern Crescent Veteran Services, to say a few words about the need and the urgency in Henry County.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. As Mr. Walston has shared with you, I believe this to be the most valuable immediate solution. The reason why I say this is because for years now, my organization has advocated, raised funds to try to assist those veterans who are homeless, or those veterans who have jobs but don't have enough income to afford. At the beginning of the pandemic, there was statistics that came out that said that by the end of 2021, there'd be three hundred thousand people homeless. But they did not break that down. They didn't go into detail. They didn't say how many of those would be veterans. Well, based on the phone calls that are plaguing my office in regards to trying to find help is now in regards to one to three calls a day for my organization. Some of those veterans are female veterans with one to three kids under the ages of thirteen. Some of those are veterans who live paycheck to paycheck, but because of the increase from the pandemic, they're now homeless. They can't afford that eleven-hundred-dollar home or apartment that is now seventeen or eighteen hundred dollars. There are some that have been evicted, and once that eviction hits their files, we all know, they can't rent anything else, and that's the biggest problem that we're having at my organization. It doesn't only affect the female vets, it's also affecting our elderly veterans, those who are sixty-two or above. They're now trying to find extended stays that their social security benefits can afford, but they're lacking additional funds to provide for food, clothing. So based on this particular model, I'm happy to enforce and endorse you guys giving him the land so we can place those veterans who have served our country, and you, and the community, with an opportunity to have affordable housing. It's getting cold, and for every year that they're underneath the bridgeways, woodline areas, even the woodline areas are no longer available to them because some of the woodline areas have been barricaded off, so they have nowhere to go. We don't want to be like the city of Atlanta when the Super Bowl came here and they had all the homeless moved out and pushed out, but they're returning back because they know this is the area where they can get help. But we need to have a solution, and I think Mighty Hero Homes is that solution. And I yield the floor back over to him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Master Sergeant. I know time is limited this morning, but I will certainly make myself available to you collectively or individually to answer any questions that you may have, but if there are any now that I can field, I'd be happy to take those.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Board has any questions? Thank you so much for the presentation, and you're absolutely right. Partnering with, uh, your local governments and other nonprofits and faith-based organizations, it is time for us to step up to the plate and deal with the homeless, um, population that we have here in the county. Just had a discussion yesterday with our mayors, uh, with regards to, uh, the homelessness. So for you mayors that are in the room, you all saw the presentation. Let's get together and see how we can figure, how we can work with this organization, because our veterans have served this country, now it's our time, and we have the opportunity to serve you all. Thank you so much for the presentation, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Our next presentation this morning is from the city of Stockbridge regarding a request for reimbursement for police department services. Chief Frank Tramer.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Frank Tramer. I'm the Chief of Police for the city of Stockbridge. Accompanying me this morning is, uh, our mayor, the Honorable Anthony S. Ford, our city manager, Mr. Frederick Gardner, our city treasurer, Mr. John Wiggins, and our city attorney, Mr. Quentin Washington. And I appreciate you for the opportunity to, uh, address you this morning on a very important matter that impacts our city financially, but more so, it impacts our department operations more directly. I'm here for, before you this morning to ask for the board's consideration to reimburse approximately two-point-four million dollars to the city of Stockbridge from the county's Police Service District Fund for taxes collected from our residents for police services from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. In December of 2020, the city of Stockbridge entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the county to provide police services within a police service district for the city of Stockbridge. That intergovernmental agreement stipulates that the county shall leverage a uniform millage rate within the police service district to fund, uh, police services within the police service district. The citizens of Stockbridge currently pay the county a millage rate of one-point-nine-zero-four mils for the police service district, and this tax equates to roughly two-point-four million dollars annually. When I was appointed as Police Chief in October of last year, I met with you, Madam Chair, and with Chief Amerman to discuss the Stockbridge Police Department's implementation plan. Uh, it was communicated at that time that it was our intent to fully implement the police department for the city of Stockbridge effective July 1st of this year. One of the major reasons that we decided to implement the police department on July 1st was to align the transition of the police department with the county's budget cycle so that the city of Stockbridge would be eligible to receive the full rollback of one-point-nine-zero-four mils that our citizens were paying to the county. Unbeknownst to me, there was a provision in the intergovernmental agreement that required the city to adopt a resolution requesting the county to discontinue police services within the city and a requirement that the resolution be delivered to the county at least twelve months prior to the city's exit from the police service district. It's my understanding that the county contends that the city did not provide proper notice within the prescribed timeframe and has therefore retained the two-point-four million-dollar tax for police services that our citizens have paid. While it is factual that the prescribed protocol regarding the timing of the notification to opt out of police services was not observed, it would be my contention that the county was aware of the city's plan to start its own police department, as this was made public in February of 2021, when the city council, uh, elected to bond funds for the startup of a police department and subsequently approved the hiring of a police chief. Uh, again, our city, but more specifically, my department, was relying on these funds to sustain our new police force. In absence of this important funding, the functioning of our department and the safety and security of our community is potentially at risk. Uh, this same intergovernmental agreement states that the county shall uniformly provide police services at a uniform and non-discriminatory level of service throughout the police service district. Since July 1st, the Henry County Police Department has not uniformly provided police services within the city of Stockbridge. My department has fully assumed this responsibility for these services, and furthermore, the Henry County Police Department has not handled any calls for service as a primary unit for any incidents arising from calls from citizens within the corporate limits of the city of Stockbridge. Since assuming responsibility for police services on July 1st, our department has relieved the county of approximately twenty-four percent of its overall service obligations, allowing the Henry County Police Department to reallocate its resources to better serve citizens living in unincorporated areas of the county. As was previously stated, while it may be factual that the prescribed protocol regarding the timing of the notification to opt out of police services was not followed, the county has also not fulfilled its obligation to uniformly provide police services to the city of Stockbridge. As such, it is our position that it is not proper to withhold taxes paid by Stockbridge citizens for police services that the county is not currently providing. Over the past three months, our department has experienced a twenty percent increase in demand for service and considerable increases in other crime and non-criminal categories. With these increases, it is necessary for us to hire additional officers to meet the heightened demands, to reduce crime in our community, and to continue to provide the high quality of service that our citizens deserve. Without these taxes from the Police Service District Fund, we will not be able to effectively accomplish these objectives, potentially affecting the quality of services we can provide and hampering our ability to effectively combat crime. Furthermore, there is a referendum for annexation on the November 8th ballot that, if it should pass, would bring an additional six-to-seven thousand residents into the city of Stockbridge. Assuming the referendum passes, we will have an even greater need to hire more officers, which is another reason why these funds are crucial. Crime and public safety are one of the greatest concerns of citizens in our country. Without these funds, our department cannot hire the additional staff necessary to effectively address crime and deliver the high quality of public safety that our citizens deserve and should expect. This is an extremely important issue that stands to possibility of impacting the safety and welfare of the citizens of our city, and I ask that you consider the public safety interest of your constituents who live in the city of Stockbridge, and I also ask that you consider our appeal to redirect the taxes paid by our citizens for police services to our city. Failure to deliver these funds could have serious consequences for the safety and security of our entire community. I thank you for your consideration and would be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, um, Chief Tramer, for the presentation. I do have some questions, but I would like to ask the Tax Commissioner, Michael Harris, to come forward, and I'd like to ask our Finance Director, David Smith, to come forward. Commissioner Harris, can, can you talk a little bit about the process and what did or did not occur with regards to why there was not a rollback?
Yeah, well, first of all, good morning, everyone. Um, we have, and we've had conversations with city officials dating back to early part of '21 in reference to, once we became aware that there was, uh, a movement with the city to move forward with the police force, we did reach out just to kind of identify what the process would be and to find out if the intent from the city was going to be to have a millage, incorporated millage at that point, and if not, then there's still a process that would need to take place in reference to, um, coordinating a agreement between the city and the county in reference to the specific rollback amount for police services. I think the, the chief made reference to that process. Um, specifics, perhaps Mr. Smith can speak to, but, um, there was some correspondence back as early as February, uh, of '21, just kind of having those conversations in reference to the process that would be needed.
So the city did not, there was no response from the city with regards to that?
The response we received at that point in time was that they did not believe the correspondence, I think from the previous county manager, city manager at the time, was that they didn't, is his understanding that they weren't going to move forward in that direction. Again, that's just based on correspondence I received back in early part of '21.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, David, there seems to be a discrepancy in the numbers because we have one set of numbers and the chief presented another set of numbers. What is the actual, I guess, um, numbers that we should be looking at?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County community. Uh, but the chief did present, Chief Tramer, he presented the full-year number, which is approximately two-point-four million dollars. Uh, the actual number for one-half a year would be one-point-two million dollars if we were to go from the July 1st timeframe.
So from July to now?
From the July to now. Yes, ma'am.
Is one-point-two?
It would be one-half of that two-point-four million that he mentioned for the full year.
Okay. So then I guess my question is, has the proper paperwork been turned in to make sure that the taxes are now, or, or the rollback has occurred? Has, has that happened?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
That number was presented by the city of Stockbridge, Commissioner Holmes.
So is this the number that we know, we owe them? Because if we owe them the money, we should go ahead and pay them money.
I don't have the position that we owe them anything, sir, because they did not follow the protocol, nor did they try to come up with an intergovernmental agreement as required. And the amount for the full year would be two-point-four million, and then the amount for one-half a year would be one-point-two million. The number that's there now is presented by the city of Stockbridge.
Right. Before the board can make a decision on this, we need the actual number from July 1 to, I guess, current date, and if the...
That would be the one-point-two million, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, so I, I would like to, um, the, so from, from July 1 to, what is the date? November 1st?
So Madam Chair, that event would be July 1st.
First through December 31st, 2022.
So that's July...
That would be the one-point-two-two-four, four-one-five-point-six-nine.
Okay. And so what is it from January 1 to November 1st?
That would be the, that would be the balance of the, the difference of the two-point-four million for the entire year.
So that would be from July of this year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
To December 31st of this year would be the one-point-two.
Yes, ma'am.
So then, rolling into 2023, um, they should have the proper paperwork in place so then that we're not doing that collection?
So Madam Chair, I'm going to let the Tax Commissioner speak to the process, because it's not just a matter of cutting it in the middle of the year. There's a timeline, so I'm going to let Mr. Harris speak to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So just to quickly clarify, what we did in order to come up with the two-point-four figure, we looked at the, the entire digest for the city of Stockbridge, and that was one-point-three-one-three billion. From there, we deduct out the exemptions that, that are pulled out, exemption amounts of twenty-seven million. That left a balance of one-point-two billion. From there, that times your millage rate of, um, uh, one-point-nine-zero-four leaves a, um, net amount of two-point-four-four, two-point-four-four, two-million-four-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-one-thousand-thirty-eight cents. That simply times point-five leaves that six-month balance of one-million-two-hundred-twenty-four-dollar-four-hundred-and-fifteen-dollar-sixty-nine cents. So that's where the numbers are coming from. So if, to be collected over the entire entirety of the twelve-month period, that number would be the two-point... be the 2.448.
Okay. So we haven't, we haven't collected it all, but what, I guess what, the point I'm trying to get to is that Stockbridge has started their police department, and as everyone knows, I am a big supporter of public safety. And so if this is their money, then we need to give them their money. I just need to know the exact figure to this point. You're, we're rounding it off to 1.2, but you gave 1.2 plus something, so I need to know the exact number. So this, if this board is, if it's the board's desire, then we can vote to go ahead and give them what has been collected. And then moving forward, whatever resolutions or whatever needs to be put in place for them to collect starting for next year, we need to make sure that that is in place.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas, I mean, Clemens.
Would you consider putting before the board that the staff works collaboratively with the city, make sure that it is the right amount? I think we have three prudent staff members there that can work with them, and we could just, if there, a vote is needed, that we would just go ahead and vote to let the staff handle it and give them what is owed, since I think we're all on the same page.
Right.
And we don't have to have a number.
Right. Yeah, but I just want to make sure that whatever we vote on, that we're not just saying we're voting on the 1.2. We want to vote on the, on the actual number so that those funds are transferred to the city of Stockbridge. Yes, Fred, you had something?
And Tax Commissioner could attest to this, that, you know, once you times the millage rate by what that, the average cost is, you know, that doesn't mean that you're going to get 100% collection, so that number is going to be a little bit off. So you, I would recommend that the verbiage that you guys use is what is collected versus just coming up with a bare number, because that number might not be accurate based on collections.
Absolutely. So can I get a motion from the floor?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the board would accept the request to reimburse the city of Stockbridge based on the amount that has been collected from the city of Stockbridge that is owed to them, and that you would allow the staff to handle the reimbursement amount.
Wait, wait a minute.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Fred, where, where did you get the 1.5? I heard you say something, but can you let me know? I didn't mention the 1.5, but typically, a mill is about 1.2 million, so if you times the 1.2 million by 1.1.904, that comes up with 2.2, 2.4 million. And so if you divide it from July to December, half that amount would give you the 1.2. So from your, from your perspective, what does this board need to do to make the city of Stockbridge whole? I think you guys were about to do it.
She just made the motion to do that.
Yeah. I think you're about to do it, sir.
She just made the motion, based on what's collected. County Manager, Sharon.
Just a point of clarification, we've got to have a cutoff at some point. So are we saying from July through December 31st, or are we looking at making them whole with the entire 2.4? Because I want to, I want to make sure that, and I'm not against what the board is saying, but I also want you all to understand from January through July, Henry County provided services to those taxpayers. And so on July 1st, when the city of Stockbridge went live, that is when they officially, when 911 calls came in, they went to the city of Stockbridge. Anything prior to that was Henry County PD, and our budget was based on that. So I just want to put all the facts out, and whatever direction this board moves in, we'll do that, but we've got to have a cutoff on that, and I need specific clarification in terms of how much are we looking to? Are we doing the entire year? Are we doing from July through December?
What has been collected thus far?
Based on the resolution when they started their police department?
Of July 1st.
So right now, you know, tax bills aren't due until November 16th, so right now, we're at, as of this morning, I think we're ballpark around 23%, 24% collected as of right now. So one of the things, part of the calculation we did run was, we took the 2.4, and we looked at, you know, half of that, obviously, half, if the decision of the board is to allocate half of that to the city. Our collection rate usually falls somewhere around 98%, 98 points some percent. That collection rate continues to increase every year, simply because we're continuing to go out and collect delinquent taxes. So there will be a cutoff date, there'll be an amount collected typically on December 31st of this year, we're usually ballpark around 97%, 98% collected, or 95%, 96% collected. By February, we're at 97%, 98%. So one option maybe for the board's consideration is to take that 1.22, that the figure I gave, and simply take that by 98%. And that's a flat rate figure, that's what we can legitimately anticipate for being a collection for this year, very close to it. But to get an exact number, that number is going to continue to increase over the course of the years.
Well, Chair, I made the motion to do it at that number, and we understand that there may be an increase, but that will make Stockbridge holding, and that would just be it at that point.
Fred, did you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. If, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, if taxes are connected and collected in November, that means that the taxes collected in November of 2021 will budget it as part of the FY22 budget, which ended in June. Correct me if I'm wrong?
We're collecting arrears.
Right.
Yeah. So what we were collecting in 2021 of November...
It's 2022.
That's correct.
So obviously, if the board decides to cut it off in December, that leaves us with a gap, obviously, as it relates to June, just January through, through June.
That's correct, but it also leaves the county with me having to come back and reduce our budget by 1.2 million. So we're both going to, there's going to, if we do the 1.2, that's got to come out of our general fund budget.
That's the reason why we need to state a number, because it's subjective right now. So we'll take a vote with no number, and then we'll, you know, there'll be some confusion that comes up later, and you guys will be coming back here saying that we owe you more money. And I don't, we really don't want to do that, right? Because...
When the police department starts, July of 2022?
July, July 1st midnight, July 1st of 2022.
This year.
This year.
Yes, ma'am. And so...
So we owe you from July 1 of 2022?
If, if, if you say restart it December, then...
No, 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 I'm asking you, the start date is July 1 of 2022?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And so in order for us to budget, you, if the county is budgeting for that police service, the county budgeted for the entire year, right?
We provided it.
That's the one, that's the 2.4 million.
Correct, because for six months, we provided that service.
Right.
Right.
So from January 1st to June 30th, we provided police services. July 1st, you all went live.
And January 2023, it's on the city.
It's on the city.
To collect.
Correct.
Correct.
So the motion...
And in that timeframe, we, that was a part of our budget that the board approved. Keep in mind, we had to purchase a building, because the building that we were in, the city of Stockbridge had to occupy. And so those are expenses that we had to budget for.
And we will adjust accordingly. David, right?
So I think there was a motion before, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Clemens, will you state your motion again?
Okay. So the motion is that the board would accept the request from the city of Stockbridge to reimburse them for police department services from July 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022. Staff, yeah, six months, July 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022. The amount is to be determined by staff based on what was collected during that period.
By, by staff and the Tax Commissioners' offices.
Tax and the Staff Commissioners' offices.
Okay.
Sharon, is that possible? Is that, is that stated right?
Mr. Harris? So the motion on the floor is for Henry County staff, in collaboration with the Tax Commissioner, to determine the amount that's due back to the city of Stockbridge based on collections from July 1st through December 31st.
Correct. That's fine. I, you know, and again, I can, for the sake of clarity and to finalize this, the number we've calculated, based on the 50% half to the county, half to the city, at a 98% collection rate, that would leave a balance due to the city of $1,199,927.38. Again, that's based on 98% collection. That's, and that number is roughly $24,000 less than the, the full 1.24. Again, that's based on, because again, we'll be at that 98 ballpark sometime around February, March typically, but we will continue. A year from now, we may be at 99.5%, because we'll continue to collect on delinquents. But for the sake of clarity and cleanness and to clean this issue up, that's one motion that the county and the city can certainly consider. The other point that Mr. Garden just brought up was in reference to what happens next year as far as the rollback for the police services, and that's part of the conversation between the city and, and the county manager.
So starting from January 1 of 2023, moving to, I guess, I'm assuming, June of, June 30th, how are we dealing with that?
So the city still needs to follow the process. They need to bring forth an amendment to the service delivery strategy. That is the process that needs to occur. Once we get that information, we'll bring it to the board, you all will agree that they now have their own police services, and that will amend the SDS where the county is no longer providing that service on record. And then going forward, the Tax Commissioner will work with them in terms of making sure that those city residents are not being charged that 1.9 mill for police services for Henry County.
Okay. So can we get a commitment of you all doing that? And what is the timeline?
Yes, ma'am. So our goal will be to start working, and we actually agreed, the three of us, that that process was, we have to come here and request from you guys in order for Sherry to be able to dispense.
So when are we going to do that? Because we're standing here talking, and we've been going...
So our goal will be to get that to you guys before the end of the year, so that we can address it.
Okay.
The key factor in there is...
Can you have it by the November 29th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Because I want to put a date on this. I don't, I don't want this to continue to linger, and, and you all have your police department.
Understood.
You all need to receive the mills that are due to you all, but let's follow the process.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's get the paperwork in, and let's get this done, and if, and I will put you all on the November agenda. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second? We got a second from Commissioner Holmes. If there is no further discussion, all in favor, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Henry County Sheriff's Office regarding the sprung structure. Chief Deputy Michael Yarborough.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and distinguished members of the Board. I'm Mike Yarborough, the Chief Deputy for Henry County Sheriff's Office. We've been asked to come before you today to provide a update from our 10-4, October 4th meeting, reference to the inmate facility that is needing for dealing with our ADP or the average daily population. So hereforeafter, we'll talk about the sprung structure, which is a temporary to permanent structure that is capable of housing anywhere from 80 to 120-plus inmates as we move forward. The positive aspects of this is that it's very quickly able to be designed, built, and occupied, and dependent upon the process, within 12 weeks. However, that does not preclude us from working on dealing with the GPOD concurrent construction, as the 80 or so inmates that would be housed in the sprung structure would still be minimum in what it would prepare us for going forward, as we spoke of last time. As you see before you is just a representation, there are multiple others that I could show. This is what the structure would appear. You can fashion the interior, that's another positive aspect of the sprung-type structure. We can modify this in a multiplicity of ways, any way that we need to, from a cell-based structure interior to a squad bay type, increasing the facility's capabilities. As you see, that you can even go to block construction and other providing for the restroom facilities and other aspects that we need. The positive benefits for the sprung structure, again, as I said, is, one, is built very quickly. We could be in that facility within 12 weeks, depending on process. Two, the financial commitment, give or take, again, the estimate would be more substantial once we get towards the construction stage, is upwards to $2.2 million, which when, again, comparing that to housing outside at an annual rate of $3.1 million for every 100 inmates, you can see the benefit there. Three, the, the cost-effective and efficiency rating is 40 to 50% better than normal construction, and that it is also able to be repurposed as we move forward. So moving to those phases, even though we meet the structure now, in three to five years, we will need to do a three to four more pods at about 120-plus capacity per pod. And in working with our team from the facilities maintenance and management team, we were able to identify a piece of property off the adjacent side of the FPOD, which provide for the ability to do a tower or a multi-floor structure, or add to three to four more pods. Phase three, moving forward in that 10-year approximate mark, then you're going to look at removing and repla, repurposing the sprung structure and constructing, constructing on the same site, an additional tower or multi-floor structure for the, where the former structure was. As we move forward in this process, what we're looking for is obviously to have a recommendation to get a design consultant or architect in that has that experience dealing with construction and jail construction, to give us the evaluation of our facilities and the sites, to make sure that we are on point with what we're trying to accomplish and how we can most effectively and efficiently do what we are doing here. Our recommendation, obviously, is to move forward immediately with this move to design and complete this structure within the next three months, so that we can address this inmate population influx that we have seen. I want to thank, obviously, our facilities team, they were instrumental in meeting, collaborating, and meeting at the location to consult with the property as well as the construction. And in this time, I'll take any questions, if there are any.
So can you go back to the slide where you showed the different types of setup for this particular type structure? That right there?
Yes.
So what are you all proposing, and what is the cost?
So if we move to the cell construction, as you see on the left picture, that is estimated somewhere around about 2.23 billion. Again, that will not be an absolute known figure until we get into the design phase and true estimation by those that...
Hutch, don't go and sit down. Come on up here to the podium, dear.
We do believe that a cell construction, and maybe with a modified open bay construction combined, may give us the most benefit, again, having the ability to provide security within the cells as opposed to only the open bay construction. The benefit of the open bay construction, obviously, is more bed space, upwards at about 120, as opposed to 80 to 100.
So you are proposing the, the structure on the left?
The, the preliminary, the preliminary recommendation would be yes.
So you're saying that's 2.3 million for a completed structure, or will there be additional cost in the build-out of this?
That would be the completed structure. Again, this is a rough estimate based upon what we know at this point, and then that's the build-out included. The only additional would be the, some of the, the ancillary things, such as, of course, beds, linens, et cetera.
Okay. Hutch, you were working with the Sheriff's Office to take a look at this, is, do we have the space to put the structure?
Yes, ma'am. We've identified the basketball rec yard as the space to erect the building.
Okay. Are there any additional questions from the board? Or Commissioner Thomas?
Is this structure a temporary structure that you're asking us to invest in?
This is a temporary to permanent structure. It actually can be temporary, or it can move on back to a 25 to 35-year lifespan without any other improvements made to it. So it's something that, the advantage to it, as well as, again, quick construction, two, that it can be repurposed. So if we rebuild there later on, and as age goes by, it can be moved to another site location. repurposed for other needs of the county and/or the sheriff's office at a moderate cost. But again, it is capable and intended to be a permanent structure.
So are you proposing this in lieu of what was proposed before about the annex that we're presently looking at refurbishing and redoing?
No, ma'am.
Are you looking at this in addition to the annex that you proposed before?
This would be a concurrent construction process. So we would, we're proposing this as our immediate fix to get us within that three-month period to get the ADP addressed. Concurrently, we would do an RFQ for someone to come in and give that site construction guidance for the GPOD construction. As, and in talking with facilities and meeting with, we understood that give or take, we're looking at about a year and a half process for that. So this would take us through that three-month to year and a half. We would be built out on the GPOD, estimated about a year and a half in. And then we would be looking at another three to five years from there, looking at the other sites that we've identified on property.
So will we continue to discuss the renovation of the kitchen and the other space as well with this? Or are we now looking at this particular facility only, putting everything in the kitchen and everything that's needed?
This would only be a housing solution. The kitchen with the annex is separate. And then again, this is housing to make sure that we, we take care of that, that daily population that is moving upward.
External, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas, this is just the external. This does not include the internal components of what will be needed, such as beds and outfitting this. Do we have a cost of what it would cost to outfit this?
That is the build out. Now, the beds and those other ancillary things that would go into the cells and some of the tables and other things that may be designed in is upward to 1 to 200,000 more. Again, we're having to do a rough estimate without any design investment at this point.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
This question is for the county manager. Sherry, instead of spending all this money on all these facilities, why don't we just move forward with the facility across the street? And we can, we can just bond it and move forward and construct it.
So Commissioner Holmes, we actually were soliciting proposals for the judicial complex. The design came in at a pretty expensive cost price tag. And so we've taken a step back to try to figure out how we're going to finance that piece. If you'll remember, we did bring to the board, I want to say last year, a resolution for us to create a public facility authority so that we could help finance it. And that's what I really, really want to do so that we don't have to pass it on to the taxpayers. Now, keep in mind, we can still move forward with that building across the street. But what I understand specifically for the sheriff's office and the other departments that have needs is that these are immediate needs. The construction and design of that judicial complex, the design's probably going to be anywhere from 12 to 18 months and probably another two and a half years for construction. And I don't think that's going to at least take care of their immediate needs and some of the needs from the other courts.
But we've been working on this for what? Commissioner Clemens, what, four or five years? And we haven't moved forward yet?
This is the jail pod, not the judicial system.
Okay, yeah. Okay, but I thought that was connected to the jail pod.
No, sir.
Okay, got it. My fault, all right.
So we're, we're working on all of it.
Still need to move forward with that facility.
Commissioner Thomas, did you have any additional questions?
I think the one thing I'm trying to determine from what you put in before us today, are we now looking at two different spaces and two different costs to alleviate this immediate problem? And I'm trying to determine, do we actually need to look at these two different spaces now to take care of this immediate problem that we're, that's being presented at the cost that we're looking at? So this is 2.3 million, I think you stated. I forgot last meeting, it was 1. something million for that upgrade and costs involved in that. And I'm trying to see how, how is this going to be done? And I also would like to know, in the budget that we gave the sheriff, and maybe David can answer this, did we put any type of miscellaneous funds somewhere in his budget for anything of this nature for him to work with? Not sure, just want to know.
So, no ma'am. Commissioner Thomas, this request did not come up during the budget period. And so that was not something we budgeted for. If you'll remember, we do have in the CIP, which is the five-year plan, the additional pod for the sheriff's office, but we don't have anything beyond that. Again, we, we base our proposals or at least our budget based on what the needs of the departments are that they submit to us. So that did not come up during their initial budget request.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas, love me as well. When you look at March and before, prior to the budget cycle, and in some submissions, we were looking at ADP of approximately 600. And then even looking into forecasting, looking at an additional 300-plus coming into the jail over the next several months, which has happened, is very difficult to forecast. Of course, we knew the increase would occur, but it has been drastically increasing over the last several months like we presented last time. So moving forward, you know, looking at those numbers, it is difficult to see and project that much of a, of a jump. However, I think we're moving back after the pandemic from what was previous before 2020. And now we're, we're steadily in that 900 to 1,000 range, which was their average in, in the past. And we're increasing that at about 78, no, no less than 78 per year and upwards to a 38, a 30% increase by 2024.
So Commissioner Thomas, to answer your question, I think the next presentation that's coming up is where Hutch will be presenting the remodeling of the kitchen at the annex. And that is a separate structure. So that would be two different costs. This is the structure that they are requesting, a temporary structure to house inmates. And then the other request is to build out the kitchen in the annex where they are also housing inmates as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
So you gave us the cost for, for a sprung structure. How much would a new pod cost approximately?
Approximately according to facilities, is they're estimating right at this moment, 6 million.
6 million?
And that again, sir, is concurrent with this. We would need both moving forward at the same time.
And what's the capacity of a pod?
Approximately 128 at, at the structure as designed currently.
Thank you.
So would this, this space that you've identified for the sprung structure, would this be a space appropriate for a pod?
Future use, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Clemens?
Madam Chair, when we talked about the pod, we didn't have a limit of 128 for a pod. We were building a pod, and the last sheriff was having us to talk about building a pod, conducive to what we project the growth of the county is going to be. So I want you to know that we're not looking at building a pod for 128 people. It's going to be based on what our consultants say we need to do based on what's happening in the county. So I just want to say that. And also, Hutch, with this sprung, I didn't see where the water, the lines, like all of the other construction part of it was involved. And this is just a facility. So as Chair Harrell has said, we need a full amount for this whole project. Interior painting, is there additional staff that's going to be needed for? And then I would ask that David would take a look with the sheriff's office. I know you've stressed over and over that there's funds in the sheriff's budget for this. Maybe you can help them identify what they have towards this and what they don't have towards it. Because I know you said over and over that there were some funds that had not been spent. If this is an emergency, I think that maybe, maybe they can use those funds to try to get it done immediately.
Well, I don't think it's funds in there for a pod.
No, not the pod.
Yeah, the pod.
But we don't, I mean, if we give the money to the chef, the chef can do whatever he wants to do with, with his funds. Is that correct, David?
That is correct.
Okay. So if he needs to move it, we don't have any, he can do whatever he wants to do.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
How many additional staff members would you need to, jailers, I guess, that would be in this structure? How many additional?
As we spoke last at the October 4th, that was the additional of the 42, 46 detention officers. Give or take, it's about a one to six ratio to staff the three different shifts that we run.
Yes.
Sorry, one follow-up question with the numbers you provided. Y'all met with us last month. And when y'all came, y'all mentioned needing a new pod at that time and y'all presented. Sprung was not presented at that time during that meeting. That being said, between October and this meeting, what led to getting the sprung structure needed versus following up with the direction of the pod?
So actually, it was inside the presentation and within the base requirement. It just was not discussed at this level of detail. So the sprung was the component with the pod moving forward. What is, so nothing really has changed other than we're looking at how to implement the most cost-efficient and effective way to, to go forward and address this daily population. But it was in there, but we just didn't get to this level of detail on it.
Okay, thank you.
If that answers that.
Commissioner Anglin, I think that there was discussion about trying to find temporary housing and to come up with options of temporary housing. And I think this was one of the things that, one of the items that was brought, you know, that they, I guess, looked into. And that's why they're here this morning to give us an update.
Yes, Madam Chair, that's exactly right. And again, the temporary housing that we looked at previously and still going forward is you're looking at $85 per inmate per day. And the only location we've even found that we could use would be Rockdale. And it's a limited space and then we have to provide the staffing as well. So there's a private function which is capable out. But then again, you're looking at the 85 plus, plus transportation, plus, plus the staffing. And you're looking at about 3.1 million, give or take, for every 100 inmates that we house out as long as we house them out. And this temporary structure, and I, I hesitate using the word temporary because I know that's something like, well, we don't want to spend, you know, I wouldn't want to spend two, $3 million on something that's temporary. This is a structure that is intended and meant to last for more than two to three decades and then re-roof only. Painting and those type of things is not existent with this structure. Those, those costs are eliminated. The hookups and things that we deal with are basically included in there. Again, it would be more detailed once we had the, the design consultant say this is what it really looks like on our site. About 70, 80 by 100, 105-foot structure. But it is capable of being permanent.
So, so let me ask you a question. Is there an ability to build up on the current parts that we have as opposed to building out?
No, ma'am. We would have to add a new, new location and build up from there. We would not be able to add to the existing pods due to HVAC and just the, the load.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. My next presentation is regarding the kitchen. So.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Last month, we were asked to go look at the jail annex kitchen and provide you guys with an update on the condition of the kitchen and the equipment. This first overhead is the current kitchen equipment. We have a Equilab dishwasher that's leased, that's going to be replaced by Equilab for the jail. We have a new two-warmer, Crest Core warming box, a two-compartments sink that will need to be replaced to a three compartments sink to meet the health code. Stainless steel table and sink, two chest freezers. The center vena hood is non-operational due to removal of the equipment. So back, Chair and Commissioner Thomas, to follow up on your question earlier. In 2001, 2002, when the police department moved to the old 345 Phillips Drive, which was the admin building, and the jail moved into their new pod over at Henry Parkway location, they repurposed the annex building at that time for property and evidence for the police department and quartermaster. So there were several years there that they utilized that space for that need. And during that time, they removed that equipment, I guess, to, you know, not have fire and, and things like that occur in the space. So that's probably why the equipment is not there, the gas-fired equipment. We also have a dishwasher vena hood ice machine, which is a 96 model that we recommend replacing, hand sinks, and then two walk-in coolers. Both are in good shape, but just need seal kits around the door. The next overhead is going to be the requested equipment that the sheriff's department provided us in order to make the kitchen functional for their use. So the first item is a convection oven, two gas fryers, steamer, restaurant range, a slicer, a dish sink, wall-mounted faucet, pre-rinced faucet unit, waste valve twist handle, ice machine, a new exhaust hood that will include fire suppression, and then a freezer and cooler door seal kit. And then finally, a epoxy floor covering to cover the entire floor in the kitchen. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
I see you've placed a cost up here for these items, but this is just for the equipment. Are you going to share costs for renovating the kitchen? Does the kitchen itself need anything other than equipment?
It's just the, the vena hood and the flooring would be the only renovations to the kitchen that's needed at this time.
Okay.
The building got a new roof on it a year before last, so we've got a brand-new roof on it.
Any additional questions from the board? Okay. All right, well, thank you, Hutch. Okay, we have several. The next item is our consent agenda. If I could have our county manager to come up so that we can hear the items on the consent agenda.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, November 1st at 9:00 a.m. The first item is an annexation request. It is not a public hearing. It is AX-22-06. The City of Stockbridge has received a request for annexation and rezoning of property located at 630 Flippin Road, 384 Flippin Road, in undeveloped land of Flippin Road parcels, 03001003001, 03001004001, and 03001004008, consisting of 278.394 plus or minus acres. And the property is located in District 5. Under capital projects, we have a resolution approving the purchase of furniture for the Henry County Police Headquarters from Jasper Seating Company, Inc., in the amount of 132,54891 through statewide contract number 99999SPD0000100-0048 using capital improvement plan funds. Under E911, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing approval of an annual reoccurring broadband data purchase through Loudm Communications for LTE systems on public safety radios at a cost of $98,190. E911 funds repairs and maintenance, and the purchase will come out of the account number listed, Under financial services, we have a resolution to re- Under financial services, we have a resolution to request the Board of Commissioners approval to accept and enter into a hosting and services agreement with third-party Prism Compliance Management, P C M, as the project administrator and technical and online reporting software to administer Henry County's forty-five million five-hundred-and-sixty thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-four American Rescue Plan's fiscal recovery funds, A R P dash F R F, awarded from the U.S. Treasury's Department program. Under the police department, we have a resolution approving the acceptance of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of ninety-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars and forty-eight cents for the highway enforcement of aggressment traffic, which is also commonly referred to as our HEAT program. We also have a resolution approving the acceptance of a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, in the amount of forty-three thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and two cents. We have a resolution approving the acceptance of a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, F Y twenty-twenty-two Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, in the amount of sixteen thousand six ninety-one. And then we have a resolution approving the acceptance of a grant from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency and Homeland Security Agency in the amount of three thousand dollars. Under the recycling center, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for waste wood grinding services for the Henry County Recycling Center. Under S P L O S, we have a resolution approving the purchase of LED sports field lighting from Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand two-hundred-and-eleven dollars for the football fields located at Mickey D Cochran Park in District Four, using S P L O S five funds, account number S P five four zero one. We also have a resolution approving the purchase of a Bobcat UW fifty-six with attachments for the Atlanta Speedway Airport through Sourcewell Contract Number zero-four, zero-three-one-nine dash C E C, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and fifty cents, using S P L O S four funds, S P four zero zero two. We also have a resolution approving a change order from Southern A and E in the amount of seventy-six thousand seventy dollars for additional survey and water and sewer design services for the District Two Recreation Center, using S P L O S five funds, S P five two oh two. Under stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the construction of Aiken-Shaifan Road Drainage Pipe Replacement and Improvement to Soul Construction LLC from Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of two-hundred-and-two thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, located in District Four. And then finally, under the tax assessor, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a contract with Pictometry International Corporation for a twenty-twenty-three flight to obtain oblique imagery of Henry County in the total amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, with payments divided equally over a three-year period. Funding is available in the tax assessor's budget. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
We've heard the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve, second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question in reference to the two-hundred-and-seventy-eight acres that would come out of unincorporated Henry County. I know that we have the liberty to do an objection due to the infrastructure demands, and I know that was the Reeves Creek project, so I didn't know what was going on with that. And why, why, why do we have this on here as an annexation?
So Commissioner Clemens, I'm going to have planning staff to come forward. This was a request that we received from the city of Stockbridge. I think in staff's review of it, we did not have grounds to object, but I'll let staff come up and present that one.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, citizens of Henry County, and board members. So this was an annexation from the city of Stockbridge to annex the Reeves Creek property into city limits. It is two-hundred-and-seventy-eight acres. It was rezoned back in twenty-nineteen in November, R Z nineteen-oh-one, with nineteen Per O C G A thirty-six dash thirty-six dash one-one-three, a county's objection to an annexation is valid if the proposed annexation would create a substantial or significant change in zoning or land use, increased density, or increase in infrastructure demands. It is planning and zoning staff's opinion that the annexation request would not create a significant change in the surrounding land uses and the future land use designation for the properties. While it is planning and zoning staff's opinion that there are no grounds for objection for this annexation request, planning and zoning staff would encourage the city of Stockbridge to consider zoning conditions placed upon the subject property as a part of the previous zoning request, R Z nineteen-oh-one, as well as the findings of the notice of decision for the D R I number three-seven-nine-nine, once complete, and their evaluation of this annexation and rezoning request. So, in a mouthful, staff has no reason to recommend objection, but we will work closely with Stockbridge to make sure that those zoning conditions are still placed on the site.
So let me say this, we can't, we can't mandate that they be placed on the site. That's number one. Number two, Chair Harrell has worked very hard with our fire chief about large projects going outside of the county, and we still have to manage them without input, and Stockbridge has their own fire marshal. Number three, I want to know, has the property owners been notified, and do they have any comments based on this? And with those three things being, I would ask that this be taken off the agenda until our fire marshal is involved, until the property owners is involved, until we can sit down and have a conversation with the city of Stockbridge. This is two-hundred-and-seventy-eight acres, and I would request that it be removed from consent agenda and be brought back and placed on the agenda after those conversations have happened.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove this from the consent agenda. Can I get a second on that?
One second.
One second, okay. All in favor of removing this from the consent agenda? Okay. So this item is, is coming off the consent agenda. Is there any other questions with regards to the consent agenda with the removal of annexation? So I know we had a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. The annexation will come off the consent agenda and will be placed on a later agenda. We would like to, Commissioner Clemens has requested that staff get with the city and, and our fire marshal, get with their fire marshal, and let's do the appropriate due diligence on this.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So, Madam Chair, just for clarification, we're removing it from the consent agenda to hear it later in the meeting or for another meeting?
For another meeting.
For another meeting, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess the next planning and zoning case was, was next after the consent agenda?
No, we've rearranged the agenda, so I will call you back up in just a little bit. So one of the things, next thing, is I'd like to bring the county manager back up and cover the county manager's items under county manager. I know that we have a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the Henry County and the city of McDonough for inspection and approval of plan review. So we're going to cover your items, Chair.
Okay, I just want to make sure, clerk, did the board take a vote on the consent agenda? I remember...
We did. We took a vote on the consent agenda.
I don't, I think Commissioner Clemens, there was a motion and a second. I think Commissioner Clemens asked for questions regarding the annexation, but I don't recall there being a final vote.
Right, so we have, she made a motion. Commissioner Thomas seconded the motion to remove the annexation off the consent agenda. The board voted to...
Thank you, okay, very good. Thank you.
And then we approved the consent agenda minus the annexation.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So I'm up here now for loss.
Well, let's go ahead and do the, the city of McDonough inspection, and then we'll do the loss. Let's go on and knock your two things out of the way. So yes, you'll be doing both loss and the inspection.
Kevin Turner, Brooklyn, is going to be sitting in the same...
Okay.
The McDonald's, do one, Austin. Do one, Montgomery, Matt.
Oops, I'm sorry.
This resolution is to approve a memorandum of agreement between Henry County and the city of McDonough for inspection and approval of plan review for the county-owned property within city limits of McDonough. The reason why we're, the county would want to pass this resolution in this case is we have some upcoming projects, facility projects that will take place in McDonough. Although the county is not required to follow the planning and zoning ordinances of the city, the county does have to follow the ordinance and regulation for building activities, which would include inspection and planning review. So we did reach out to the city of McDonough and agreed to a memorandum. I don't know if you all can see this, but the county duties would basically include, will approve our own plan and review and inspections of the county projects in all stages of the developments of construction, including but not limiting to the grading, the surveying, erosion, control of tree preservation, drainage, flood control, water quality, et cetera. The county will also apply city standards when conducting these inspections. They will permit and plan review associated with the project, and we're required to do so by state. And upon a request, the county will allow the city's inspector to observe the county's inspection during all stages of the development and construction. The city's duties will basically be the city should not interfere through any action or inaction with the county review or inspection of the county's project, and the city shall not impose any impact, plan review, permitting, and or inspection fee against the county since the county will be using its own inspectors and own workers in order to carry out the inspections and plan review. This is a basic contract terms, in terms of the agreement. It's a one-year contract with five automatic renewals. Either party can terminate for cause with sixty days' notice to the other party, and there's a termination, excuse me, termination clause in any agreement for convenience, which either party can terminate with thirty days' notice. So the county, we would ask that you pass this resolution. The county is more equipped to inspect the facilities that the county is planning on building out, and it wouldn't place an undue burden on the city of McDonough, so.
And this is specifically related, I know, with the Aquatic Center that is going up in the city of McDonough.
That, yes, it does include the Aquatic Center, and it's for five years, and would include any additional county projects that we plan within that time period.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion?
Motion is in, Mr. Redd.
Second, can I get a second? Oh, yes.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we speak with the McDonald's. I haven't seen any communication.
I believe it.
But we did not speak with Mayor Vincent regarding this.
Madam Chair, I will ask that you please defer this to a later time. Staff is not informed of any communications, nor to have any discussions concerning this. And I apologize, this is just all...
So, board, I will ask that you all recall when we were discussing the Aquatic Center, and one of the things that we talked about specifically when we were initially looking to work with the city of Stockbridge is that those, all of the fees, the plan review fees would be waived. At the time that we decided on the property to be located in the city of McDonough, we met with the board, and I believe Mayor Vincent was present for that meeting, and we discussed the county taking on the responsibilities of doing the plan review. That is what we currently do, but there has nothing ever been formalized. And so for a number of the county projects, we do those inspections. A lot of times, the staff or the cities will show up and say, hey, is this something the county's going to do or the city's going to do it? So we just wanted to formalize it so that we would have something going forward. If it's the wishes of the board for us to sit down with Mayor Vincent and go over this resolution, we can certainly do that, but the staff's position remains the same in terms of being able to have the ability to do the inspections, plan review, and all of the other processes that come along with it. The other project beyond the Aquatic Center is also going to be the judicial complex because it is too located within the municipal boundaries of the city.
Okay.
And just specifically, this resolution allows the county to go ahead and sign that, their portion of the memorandum of agreement, and it also allows it, the chair or the county manager, to amend the memorandum if required to do so. So we can go ahead and approve our resolution, still work with the city, and sign a memorandum at a later time, in lieu of bringing it back before the board.
Any discussions from the board, Commissioner Clemens?
I don't think Mayor Vincent's statement is an objection to the resolution. I think it's just out of respect, and I would ask that, you know, position shouldn't determine leadership, and if that's the will of the mayor, it's not that we're not on board with it, this is what we want to do, and she's not objecting to it. I just think out of respect, we should, Chair, I mean, of course, she's asking you to take it off, but I think that we should consider...
So let's put this on the November twenty-ninth. That gives staff time enough to come back and have the opportunity to speak with Mayor Vincent so she can have a better understanding as to, to, to what is going on. So we'll, we'll just move this to the, to the November twenty-ninth agenda.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, yes, just table it to a date specific.
Okay, so then, can I get a motion to table it?
Move to table.
Make a motion that we table this in the November twenty-ninth meeting.
Okay, and get a second? Second. On if no more further discussions. Everyone in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor Vincent. County manager, I just need you to come up so we can go over the loss.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, we're, I'm going, going to turn this over to our Financial Services Director, David Smith, but at the last board meeting, we had some lengthy dialogue in terms of the proposal that the county had submitted in comparison to that, that the cities had presented. At the conclusion of that meeting, the board did take a vote based on the recommendation received from Commissioner Wilson regarding a sixty-six point seven-five and a thirty-three, I believe, point two-five. After that vote was taken, there was a lot of additional conversation, and I think at the request of Commissioner Clemens, she asked that we bring back three charts outlining the different requests that were received. The board should have received this last week from our Director of Budgets, Bernita Campbell, but we also have it available on the overhead. I'm going to allow David to go through those three charts as it was requested from Commissioner Clemens, and then we will yield to the board for any questions that you all may have.
So the presentation that's up right now, Commissioner, is one of the requests that was made by Madam Chair, and so I'll get to, to this one. I'm hoping that you received the package that Commissioner Clemens had asked me to do. It's a presentation. Where's my presentation? Commissioner Clemens had requested a review of three. She had wanted three slides. One was a 6931, and I'm hoping that you have that in your package. The second one was a... The second was a 6634, leaving everything status quo. And the third was, what does it look like with all the criteria in it? So this was the population only that was presented by Commissioner Wilson, where it shows a split between the cities and the county over the next 10 years, splitting the 627.4 million dollars. This slide is keeping everything status quo, and you'll see that the difference between keeping everything status quo and Commissioner Wilson's difference is about, a switch of about $20 million between the county and the cities, just a flip. This is what it looked like when it was all the criteria included, a criteria-based county proposal, because this is primarily based on all of the services that are rendered, where it winds up being a 7722 split. Neither of us wanted the total criteria base. What I wanted to point out on this particular slide is that what we're dealing with in this current or over the next 10 years, what we're dealing with is a $627 million potential of income coming in versus a $346 million over the prior 10 years. We're dealing with an actual pie that's approximately 80% larger than the pie we were dealing with before. So a pie this size, even though you might be receiving a smaller percentage, you're receiving a smaller percentage of a larger pie, which leaves you still whole. You're not really losing anything, and nothing is actually being taken away from you. So this would be the impact of no change, and this is based on the slides that Commissioner Clemens had requested, what it looks like, where I'm showing the flip between the cities and the county. And I'm prepared to take questions on that one before I get to...
Can you go back to the last?
To Madam Chair's proposal.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Basically, what that's showing is that the impact of the change is a flip between who's actually receiving over the next 10 years, who's receiving the additional $2 million per year. And that's with the status quo versus Commissioner Wilson's request. And then if I could get technology to help me pull up the next proposal.
No, just wait, he's still, yeah, he has another proposal. Let him get through the presentation.
So subsequent to the request from Commissioner Clemens, I received another request to run a proposal of what does it look like at 6733? What would that split look like? And here you're seeing where the counties would be receiving 413, the cities receiving 207, with the split being approximately 14 million between the cities and the counties versus Commissioner Wilson's proposal. I wanted to show this slide so that we could see just how large the pie is over the last 10 years versus the next 10 years, where you see an increase of, the pie size is just 80% larger than what it was before, basically double the amount almost. And in dollars and cents, this is what that particular versus current year, I mean, next 10 years versus prior 10 years, what that looks like. Where we see the loss collection difference steadily increasing for both the cities and the counties. I'm prepared to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, first, I wanna thank staff for doing the job that this Board directed you to do. David, you and your team have been, have gone above and beyond and been amazing in helping us get through this loss. The loss negotiation that has taken place between the cities and the county was just that, a negotiation. It became kinda spirited at times. This is part of government. We have passionate and committed leaders advocating for their needs of their jurisdiction, just like we are here at the county. To my mayors, we have always kept the lines of communication open and have been able to sit around the table, even as we did yesterday, to share our thoughts and concerns. I can say as the Chair of this county, I can support a resolution put forth by the cities to keep the loss at the current split of 6634. This way, we all win. Our citizens win, and we continue to work and collaborate together as we have always said we wanted to do. So those are just my words, and I would like to open it up to the Vice Chair, Commissioner Thomas, for any comments or questions that she may have, and then we'll do each district.
David, thank you so much for your presentation, the hard work that you and your team have put forth. I know that we are trying to find the right number where we can work together, but I was reading the proposal that was given to us to look over, and the one thing that really constantly is in so many of the pages that bother me, and I want an answer to this, that we are not using the eight criterias that is to be used to divide up the loss process, we the county, that we are not using those criterias. And that bothers me, because whatever we choose to do, stay at the same or increase, I don't like the idea being presented that the county is not doing what we are supposed to do by following a process, when we just asked the City of Stockbridge to follow their process and making sure we pay the right dollars to them for the services that they've rendered in July to this day or whatever. Could you please go back to your, and also it was stated in here, that the consultant that we paid, I hope he's here, did not use the eight criterias that's needed to determine the lost dollars? Again, I don't like the language that has been put out there about the process. So could you please go back to the slide where you did use all eight criterias, and tell me what those numbers are once again, and is that consultant in the building today?
Madam Vice Chair, the consultant is not here today.
Okay.
But I want to clarify that point, that we did not use all eight criteria. The fact is, we presented several options, one where we did use all eight criteria, and that's the one that was the offer that offended many of our cities, and that was the 8020. And that included the, what also offended the cities was the point that we, they wanted to see us not double count the citizens in terms of population. And so that one does include all eight criteria, we did use that. In a presentation provided by the cities, even with all eight criteria and the supplementary powers that were presented, even their number shows a 69 to 31 split, and that's utilizing all eight criteria from their perspective. It was still at 6931. So I just wanted to make certain I clarified that point, but the 8020 was our beginning negotiation piece, and then we've now worked down to what I've just heard Madam Chair say, the 6634 or status quo.
So I just wanna make clear, David, and there again, if you'll just help me, you did give the proposal that used all eight criterias, and in that proposal, actually the numbers show that the county should receive more dollars. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. But the logic behind that, the logic behind that, Madam Vice Chair, is based upon the number and level and dollar amount of services provided, as well as the tax equity. We included greater weight toward the tax equity and general fund expenditures, not only of the county, but of all the cities as well, and that's how we arrived at that number, the percentage breakdown.
And are you also saying you received numbers from the city using all eight criterias, and their numbers also show an increase for the county? Is that correct?
That is correct. The point where the cities disagree, where there's a largest disparity, is utilizing a point-of-sale as one of those criteria, where it is their belief that they generate the, or they collect, not necessarily generate, because the generation is based upon the people that actually are paying the taxes, but where they collect in their corridors the majority of the sales tax.
Okay. And my reason for asking the questions, again, is because the write-ups that I've received make it appear that we are not using the criterias that is set forth to make these decisions, and I wanted to dismiss that. From my point of view, from what I've received from you, we have, and from what I've received from them, we have, but we're not following those numbers. We are open for negotiation. Another thing I did wanna say is that I too can support staying where we are. I have no problem with that, but I did wanna make sure it's clarified that the county is using the structure that is presented before us to make the correct answers, and how those percentages are supposed to be. And I know, Madam Chair, as you stated, every city is looking out for what they are trying to do for their cities, but every city sits into the county, and we are trying to work for all constituents. When I look at a person, I'm not looking into going, what city are you in, what district are you in, who you represent? We are looking at the citizens of this county. Therefore, every city sits in the county, and the county is serving the county. I too can support, as you stated, Madam Chair, staying where we are, but I must say, if we looked at our criterias as it has been presented to us, there would be a movement, and that movement probably would be justified based upon the criteria that has been set forth as how we are to actually break up the lost dollars. But again, we are open for negotiation, want our cities to be healthy, want our cities to be strong, and we're gonna support them in that effort, but I just did not want to leave this bad taste in our mouth that we are not doing something properly, and I have to believe that our finance department would not present to us something that was improper. They can give us presentations, different presentations, but more than anything, making sure they're following the process. Thank you, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wilson, let's do a go, district by district.
Oh, I don't have any comments. I will have to, I will say, Madam Chair, I think your recommendations is, I think that's gonna be the, that's gonna be my vote as well.
I would just like to say, I think this whole process has taught us a couple of things. One, I wanna make sure that we as elected officials understands that leaders should not be confused with positions of authority, and that this is not a unitary government, and a good leader collaborates with everyone, and I think that we have to do more of that. I think that the city is getting together, you guys led the way, you showed an example, and a unitary government means that the strongest of the government monopolizes the weaker of the government, and not necessarily weak in power, but just in size and position, and that's not what this is supposed to be about. All of us were elected. No one was elected to be in a different or a higher position than anyone else, and I think that we have to work more collaboratively. That means this Board working collaboratively, just like the city has worked collaboratively. So thank you for giving us that lead, cities.
Commissioner Anglin.
I'll say thank you to David's staff and to our elected officials that are here, the mayors and their support staff, so thank you all for being here. I don't usually say a lot, but I'll just say a couple of words. After number crunching myself, those who know me know I'm a bit of a numbers nerd, the 6931 split, to me, seems to be the right number. Also supported by page 38 in the slide that the city provided us as well, and also the numbers that Johnny put together with staff. With that being said, as I can sit here being right in my number, but at the end of the day, I have to make sure I do the right thing, not just for myself, but for the cities of which we also serve. So with that being said, I will gladly make that motion for a 6634 split.
Okay, Commissioner Home.
Yeah, I just wanna thank all the comments we received from the mayors, and what we're doing today is the right thing for both the county and the cities.
Okay. So currently right now, Commissioner Anglin has made a motion to keep the split where it is of a 6634. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So I know that the mayors had signed up for public comment, and normally we do public comment at the end of the meeting, but I would like to ask all of the mayors to come forward that are here present.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, appreciate that. The cities were united, they'll be right here, all the mayors are here. Cities win, the county wins, and better yet, our citizens, which we represent, win. Next 10 years will be outstanding, and we're all gonna grow together, and it's gonna work. God bless you all, and I appreciate it. And I just gotta say, the Stockbridge is where the community connects.
Mayor Tarpley, Mayor Tarpley, come on up.
Good morning. I'm not usually lost for words. First, I wanna say thanks to all of the mayors that stood together and brought in great staff to put together wonderful proposal to present to the county. I wanna thank the county chair and the commissioners for coming together, looking at all of the numbers, and making a decision based on the community as a whole. Commissioner Clemens, I reached out to you on yesterday, spoke with you, but you made a stance on October the 18th that you wanted information, to be well-informed, and you allowed the cities to send out information to all of the commissioners of what we had, we felt... of what we had, we felt like was a fair and equitable division of our loss. And I thank you for listening and for taking the stance that you would support the cities and what our proposal was. Commissioner Holmes, I thank you so much as well. In our last meeting, you rescinded your vote and said, hey, after listening to you guys, I think that this would be the best way forward. And of course, our chair, yesterday, we had a wonderful meeting, a wonderful meeting, and really put our heads down and looked at everything and said, this is the way forward. And so I really want to thank you guys and everybody that came on board and said, this is good for our community. This would be the best way for us to move forward. And so thank you so very much, we do appreciate it. And I thank you very much from the City of Hampton and all of our staff and residents.
Mayor Price, Mayor Benson.
I'd like to thank every one of you, and how this thing went down, by us all working together and getting our figures a little bit here, a little bit there, and doing the things we should do. But it was a pleasure to work with the councilmen and chancellors and the vice chair and the mayors of the other cities. It shows that Henry County is all united, and we can work together on any project that comes up in anybody's district, anybody's town, that we can work together as a whole. And from the bottom of my heart, and the people in my town of Locust Grove, we thank you. Right there, right next to you, if you ever need us for anything. Thank you all.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Thank you all. Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Anglin, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Holmes, Chair Harrell. This is truly a spirit of collaboration, one that I will hope will continue. I do want to thank you for every role that you played. I want to especially thank you, Commissioner Clemmons, for diving down into the need for data, because one of the things that you haven't heard is, even though Commissioner Thomas's criterion was considered, our foundational disagreement is the fact that you can't double count the citizens. And that is where we disagreed. The county felt that they could count all of the citizens, and they cannot, because there are services that individual cities provide within those eight criterias that is not provided by the county. So I wanted to make sure that that point was cleared up as well. But I appreciate you all. And I want to say this, because this is probably the last time that I will stand before you this year, but Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Chair Harrell, Johnny, all that you've done with the veterans, and Dee, you're in my district, so I really appreciate you. But we've done a lot of great things over the years, the small business development, the HOA boot camps. We need to keep that spirit up. And I'm highlighting Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Clemmons, because you won't be returning. But I want you to know that you have been a force within Henry County. You have moved us forward in a great way. And I just want to make sure that you understand publicly how much I appreciate the work that you all have done in Henry County, in the City of McDonough. God bless you all, and please, let's keep this going, because we've got a lot that we have to do. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner, Mayor, you threw me off, because Commissioner Clemmons will be returning, so I'm...
Okay. I'm sorry, the districts change, that's what I make reference to public. My apologies, thank you so much.
Okay, all right, thank you. See if I can get back on track here. So financial services, if I can get financial services, I guess.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners in Henry County Community. What you have before you is a resolution approving a sub-recipient agreement with Piedmont Henry Hospital in the amount of three-point-five million dollars of ARPA fiscal recovery funds for the construction of a new observation unit. These funds are intended to provide support in responding to the economic and public health impacts of COVID-19, and in their efforts to contain impacts on the community, residents, and businesses here in Henry County. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Piedmont Henry Hospital was disproportionately impacted, in which they provided care for almost five percent of Georgia hospitalized COVID-19 patients. It resulted in increased hospitalization stays, and patients were held in non-traditional spaces. Piedmont Henry Hospital submitted a proposal at our request in the effort to meet the overwhelming demands of COVID-19 and other unforeseen health crises in order to construct a new observation unit. Staff recommends that we enter into a sub-recipient agreement with Piedmont Henry Hospital. Here this morning is Dr. Lili Henson. She has a presentation with regard to Piedmont Henry.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and distinguished commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present this request for ARPA fund grant. Here we go, great, all right. My name is Lili Henson, I'm the CEO at Piedmont Henry Hospital here in Henry County. Just to summarize, some of the data regarding what happened during COVID-19 in the last two and a half years. Although we are, at the time, licensed for two-hundred-and-thirty-six beds and currently two-hundred-and-fifty-nine, we all know that the number of licensed beds does not actually translate into the number of patients needing beds in the hospital. At one point during our Delta surge in August of 2021, seventy-five percent of the patients in the hospital had COVID. And again, David mentioned the fact that although we only represent one percent of all the acute care beds in the state of Georgia, we actually hospitalized about five percent of all the Georgia COVID-19 patients at Piedmont Henry Hospital. The increased severity of illness associated with COVID, as well as limited discharge options, such as difficulty with extended care facilities, having labor shortage, as well as very restrictive COVID emission policies for those extended care facilities, as well as family members unwilling to bring home patients with COVID, resulted in a significant increase in our length of stay for our patients. And at one point, a hundred, we were at a hundred-and-twenty-six percent of bed capacity in the hospital. So two-hundred-and-thirty-six licensed beds, but well over, close to three-hundred patients in the hospital needing beds. And as some of you may remember, that in August of 2021, we had one day where in our fifty-five-bed emergency room, we had over a hundred-and-seventy patients. So a hundred-and-twenty patients needing evaluation with a downstream effect of Henry County EMS being stuck on the wall for hours waiting to hand off patients to us. So this quick picture showing some of the care that we were providing, but essentially, we were forced to have admitted patients in our hallways and in non-conventional areas such as the ORs, endoscopy suite, cardiac cath labs, interventional radiology, which basically prevented us from being able to provide care such as surgery and cardiac cath procedures and interventional procedures, because we needed the space to take care of these COVID patients. And we even took non-clinical areas like the subway dining area, our gift shop, and patient registration to provide care for our patients who were in the hospital during the pandemic. This is just a quick slide to show you how the number of admissions has gone up since COVID. March 2020 was when we had our first COVID patient, that's down in the bottom left. And you can see the trend line shows a gradual increase in the number of hospitalized patients at Piedmont Henry. I would be remiss to note that, to not mention, with the closure of Wellstar AMC in South Fulton County as of last month, the impact on our emergency room as well, in terms of the number of ambulances that are arriving, bringing much sicker patients. So our hospital census also results in a large number of observation patients. Those are patients who need to be in the hospital for less than twenty-three hours, but that take up inpatient beds. In FY22, we had twenty-two-hundred observation patients, accounting for over forty-two-hundred hospital beds, which translates to an observation average daily census of over eleven patients taking up hospital beds. And that basically means that there are eleven admitted patients in the hospital, in the emergency room every day, waiting for an inpatient bed. Our proposal is to create an observation unit on the second floor of the hospital. We would move our wound care clinic, which is an outpatient clinic, into a medical office building on the campus. This would allow us to put up sixteen bays with vertical recliners for patients who, again, meet criteria for being in the hospital less than twenty-three hours. We would have a dedicated provider and equipment in that space that would allow us to make real-time decisions about keeping patients in the hospital by eighteen hours. And that actually translates to eleven acute care beds for the hospital that we currently don't have. The projected expenses, the cost of construction, at least as of May of 2022, when these numbers were first created, would be about two-point-four million. In addition, the cost of equipment is about eight-hundred thousand. And then the cost of IT is about ninety thousand, with a contingency of two-hundred thousand. So the total project budget is three-point-five million dollars. And we would be very appreciative of this consideration. I do want to add, take advantage of this time, to add on the fact that we are doing some really exciting things now that we're getting past the pandemic, including planning on expanding the campus. We truly are out of beds based upon the tremendous growth we've seen here in Henry County. And later this month, we are undergoing a survey by the state for Level III trauma, which will again allow us to provide really quality care for the trauma patients that show up in our emergency room. In addition, we are, we are bringing onboard twenty-four-seven surgicalist coverage for these trauma patients. And also are bringing onboard a neurosurgeon who will be doing cranial cases here at Piedmont Henry, something that we've not previously been, ever been able to do at Henry, and have been forced to transfer to Atlanta. So these are all some of the exciting things that we're doing at the hospital, and I hope you will consider our request. I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Henson. Piedmont has been a great partner with the county, and you all are vital to the health and welfare of our community. I know that we have a resolution on the table with regards to awarding some ARPA funds. If the board has any questions, Commissioner Holmes.
First of all, I want to say Piedmont is probably the number-one employer and the top revenue driver in this county. And I want to let you know that I'm a hundred percent on board with this resolution. I also want to say that you've been an awesome CEO, and you guys have done an awesome job for the citizens of this county and the surrounding counties. So thank you so very much.
Absolutely. Commissioner Thomas.
Well, I think I have made it clear that District Four is the medical and professional hub of the county. I've been preaching it for almost four years, and now people are believing it. And they are now echoing that same sentiments around us. We are here to help you with your expansion, help for what you have to do for this community. I'm excited about the expansion that you're going to add to the hospital, and was hoping that you elaborate a little bit more on that. In addition to that, you said this is an observation unit, okay? And I know for those of us who don't know the terminology as well, would this have beds in it, or not beds, or just chairs? Would you please explain that just a little bit more?
Sure. So observation patients are those that are deemed by the insurance companies, by their payers, to require less than twenty-three hours in the hospital. And so these patients really are admitted for observation, technically, and undergo a series of tests to determine whether or not they meet criteria for full admission. And so we would have recliners for these patients. They don't need to be in a hospital bed, obviously, if you're bedridden, you probably do require to be admitted. So we are able to put in sixteen patients in a discreet unit, where the focus of the team would be to make a decision about whether or not the patient is ready for discharge or not by the twenty-three-hour mark. If they're not, then we would move them upstairs into a regular bed. Right now, our observation patients are scattered throughout the hospital, because we are so jam-packed that we will place our patients in any space available. And so unfortunately, that doesn't allow us to be as focused as we'd like to ensure that these patients are moved out if they don't require hospitalization. So it would be a much more efficient use of space. As you know, Henry County has grown tremendously, and the number of patients that we take care of at Piedmont Henry has also grown tremendously. Ironically, we take care of patients not just for Henry County, but for a number of the surrounding counties. And with, we see a lot of ambulances in our bay from Clayton and Butts County and Spaulding County. I think those numbers will only go up as we get our trauma designation, hopefully, by the middle of this month. And then also with the closure of AMC, we are seeing transfers of patients from Fulton County as well. So we desperately need to expand. I think we have been working very carefully to understand what the demand will be so that we could proactively design a facility that will be able to encompass the number of patients that we have, and also account for growth.
Well, thank you so much for that information. And additionally, I just wanted to say, of course, we're here to support you, and I will support your initiative here. And I'm going to ask you, as we have just heard, to reach out to some of our cities, to see if they will support some of these initiatives as well, to help us make our hospital even greater than it is. They too have ARPA funds as well. And I do want to say that it would be a great thing to see them step up and help with this hospital to make it even a greater place than it is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holmes, you, did you make a motion?
I'll make it. I move to approve.
I'll second, but I do have a discussion. Yes, Dr. Henson, I wanted to know the total cost of the project, because I remember I thought initially you had asked for more. Is this the total cost?
No, this is the total cost.
This is the total cost of the project, and a timeframe?
I believe, although my COO will probably have a heart attack when I say this, I believe we should be able to get this done within six months.
Okay. And so I would ask the county, I don't know if we have something where if we, David, I guess this would be a question for you, once... guess this will be a question for you, once we assign the ARPA funds to the hospital, how does that work? Is it earmarked designated for that, or how does that work? And is there an agreement that's going to be written to say these funds are specifically for this project? Long as Dr. Henson is there, I feel good, but we know how Piedmont changes, Dr. Henson.
Yes, Commissioner Clemens, there would be an award letter, there would be an agreement, there will be a period of performance in terms of how they are to receive the funds themselves, and then a timeframe for that to occur.
So, Dr. Henson, I asked about the timeframe because of period of performance that we have also from using ARPA funds as well. I think, are we still under that, or this one is open?
We have until December 31st, 2024 to fully expand the funds.
Okay, so we have that timeframe. And then your service area, could you talk a little bit more about the service area that Piedmont Henry is servicing? And is there any plans to work with those other jurisdictions that are now pouring into the Henry Hospital? And how does that work?
Well, at the end of the day, we are here to serve the citizens of Henry County, so our focus has been with all of you and other public officials within Henry County. We have not had conversations with officials from our surrounding areas. However, with the impact of AMC's closure, we have been in communication with Senator Warnock's office as well as Senator Ossoff's office to discuss the implications of their closure.
Yeah, we, we can talk offline. I'll, I'll be happy to schedule a meeting to talk about that. I'm really concerned about it because that's the complaint that I hear from our citizens is that it's, it's so crowded, they come in, we've got Butts, Spalding, you know, all the other hospitals around that are being serviced in our hospital, even though it's supposed to be a primary facility for Henry. And so it, it's something that we can do to talk to the other surrounding boards of commissioners. I'm sure Chair Herrell can help lead that charge. We might need to go have some conversations with them about how they can...
But you all cannot turn anyone away?
No, we cannot.
No, no, this is not about that, but it is about, I'm sure those boards that don't have hospitals will be willing to participate in servicing their citizens as well.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got, Commissioner Holmes, you, you made the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've got a second. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Henson.
Thank you. I just want to say that Piedmont's promise is to make a positive difference in every life we touch, and we are very grateful for this opportunity to serve our citizens, so thank you very much.
All right, David?
The next item, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners in the community, is a resolution for the Board of Commissioners to enter into a sub-reception agreement with the Henry County Water Authority in the amount of $7.3 million for water and sewer infrastructure improvements. Back in June of 2021, this board approved Resolution 2181 to accept the treasury funds in the amount of $45,567.64. In June of 2022, Henry County then requested proposals for entities in need of assistance addressing improvements in the county's infrastructure, specifically regarding water and sewer. Henry County Water Authority proposed a list of prioritized projects that were in phases ready for completion for a total proposed amount, there were two project lists, for a total proposed amount of $14.6 million. This resolution is for a proposed amount of $7.3 million in an effort to meet the overwhelming demands of improvements to the county's water and sewer infrastructure for multiple districts. Staff recommends that we enter into this sub-reception agreement with Henry County Water Authority to assist the authority in improving the county's water and sewer infrastructure. Concomitant with this agreement, the Water Authority must make certain that they are applying and abiding by all federal restrictions that pertain to Davis-Bacon, that pertain to supplanting, and all expenditure requirements. We have Mr. Tony Cornell, the Director of the Water Authority here, to present the project list.
David, you mentioned a couple of things toward the end. Can you talk about what supplanting means?
Well, we, basically, the federal government requires that if you have not started, that you not have started a project or have budgeted for that particular project before getting work on it. And if you've already assigned dollars to a particular project, then if we assign more dollars to that project, that is supplanting.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Tom.
But, but in the agreement, we're going to make certain that the Water Authority abides by those things.
Okay, following the ARPA guidelines, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you all for having me here. I'm Tony Cornell, the General Manager for Henry County Water Authority. And I'd just like to start by saying, the Water Authority, we have a $965 million capital improvement budget for, for the next 30 years, and that is forecasted out based on population. We, we're able to calculate unit water demand, wastewater demands, and here recently, just last month, we awarded probably one of the biggest projects in the history of Henry County, especially Henry County Water Authority, a $180.1 million wastewater treatment plant expansion. That's for Walnut Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility. That facility serves about 75% of Henry County, and that project came in about $40 million more than the engineering estimates, and that's because of inflation, cost of materials, lack of subcontractors, and things of that nature. So I say that before I get into this list of projects here, any assistance we can get from the county to help us to offset some of our expenses on projects, you know, will also help us to minimize the rates that we set forth for our customers, and we, we have a rate increase that's upcoming, and the way we're, we'll pay the difference in these projects is, is through our rates, so anything we can get will help offset that. This first list here is a list that our board approved, a resolution that was sent over, I believe it was around May of 2021, and the projects that are on here are the Western Parallel Connector Water Line Extension, the Western Parallel Connector Sewer Line Extension, Highway 20 West Loop, and the Highway 81 Ground Storage Supply Line. These projects are system improvement projects. These are projects at the time that we submitted over here were to help us to provide better service to the customers because of our growing need. So these projects were not started until, it was after March 21 that David mentioned about the supplanting, and we did not approve funding for any of these projects. They did not start construction until after that date. So we needed to move forward with these projects, and so the only project on this list we've not started is the Western Parallel Connector Water Line Extension. That project is currently going to be designed once the roadway project is constructed. The Western Parallel Connector Sewer Line Extension, that's a project that's under design. That was a project that the Water Authority committed to complete, which was part of a BUND refinance we did in late 2020, early 2021. So Water Authority committed to doing that project as part of that, and these other two projects are just system improvements that we have started, worked on these projects already. And as of October 3rd, the Western Parallel Connector Sewer Line, we've just done design, we, we spent $110,278 to date. The Highway 20 West Water Line Loop, as of that same date, we spent $580,000, and the Highway 81 Ground Storage Supply Line, we spent $1,056,000 on that project. So those are projects that we needed to do. We never got a definitive answer whether or not the commissioners were going to approve funding for these projects, so we had to get started. So those projects have been started. So we were asked to, I was tasked to talk with the different commissioners. I think I spoke with just about each of you probably earlier in the year about projects that you may desire in your district, and so this second list of projects, the second list of projects here on Exhibit B, this is feedback that I got in speaking with some of you, this North Ola Road Water Line Replacement, $750,000 project. This is a six-inch line that is along North Ola Road due to all the new development, the schools and everything, the publics there on Highway 81. We had in our CIP to eventually upsize that line anyway, but there's a SPOSS project going on where the sidewalks are going in near the schools. Once the sidewalks are in, there's going to be minimum amount of space for us to relocate our water line, so this was a project that I recommended to Mr. Anglin that I thought would be a good candidate for, for this list here, so that's why this project here is on the list, so we can go ahead and upgrade a portion of that line, and we'll do the rest of it when SPOSS project comes along down near the intersection of Snappin' Shoals and North Ola. This next project, this Jody Co. Road East Sewer System Expansion, this is a conversation I had with Commissioner Thomas. We were talking about her desire of the medical facilities coming in on, in, in her district, and being with all the growth and everything that's happening on the west side of the interstate there along Jody Co. Road. We don't have any sewer services in this area. There's been several cities, excuse me, several developers that have come in and inquired about sewer, and it's really going to take putting in a pump station at that location so that we can serve most of the, the properties there on the east side of Interstate 75, so that's why that project's there. This countywide water line extensions, these are projects, majority of those are in Commissioner Wilson's district, and what we did, we were tasked to look at the roads throughout the county and the number of parcels along each road, and the criteria we generally use was if there's 29 parcels per mile, it was a candidate for, for the criteria that we utilized. And so we went through and came up with a number of roads in the different districts, and by far District 1 had the most amount of water lines that needed improvement, and there was very few in a couple of the other districts. The Anvil Block Fairview Road Sewer System Expansion, I met with Commissioner Holmes, and we looked at, there was, I guess, the previous SPOSS, there was a couple of million dollars allocated to get sewer up to the Fairview area, and we were able to extend sewer as far as we could with those funds, and so there were some remaining portions along Anvil Block Road and along Fairview Road that we didn't have quite the funding to make that happen, and so this extra $725,000 is why this project's on the list. The James Creek Sewer System Extension, this is a desire, again, of Commissioner Holmes, talking with him, a desire to serve some of the areas there along East Atlanta Road, and so this prob, this project here would take care of that, putting a lift station in south of Rex Road and, and pumping our sewer up and providing sewer for that area. So that's the general overview of why these two lists were developed, and so we, the authority, we're prepared to do whichever of these projects y'all choose and y'all would like for us to do, bearing in mind, due to inflation and everything, we, we did these cost estimates early on, and we're quite certain that there's probably not going to be enough funding to do all of them. Any questions?
Any questions on the board, Commissioner Wilson?
Tony, on the Western Parallels, you'll be, you'll be putting the water and sewer on the, on the county right away, correct?
Yes, sir.
Once that road is built?
Okay, as far as the water, the water line will be on the county right away. The sewer will not be on the right away. The sewer, we're in design now, we're probably about 95% complete. We're looking to start construction probably the first part of next year.
So it, the road does not have to be in place for that, then?
No, sir, it does not.
So you'll be going out and buying property for easement, I guess, through private property owners?
Yes, sir, we will start that probably next month or two.
Now, it says a water line extension of $1.6 million. Is that something the county needs to do? Well, of course, we've got to wait for the, the road to be cut, but the, according to GDOT, they're going to be purchasing right away from the, we're going to be purchasing, they're going to reimburse us for $6 million for, for the right-of-way purchase for the Western Parallel. So if the landowners have the money to, to have that water line run, why don't we let the landowners purchase the water line? Then they're going to have the money, because we are, we are going to be paying them for the right-of-way.
Well, there's two things...
Can they not purchase their own water line?
Yes, sir. Two, two things with that. We are obligated because of the BUND refinance that you all voted for us to refinance our BUND, we committed to doing these two projects, the Western Parallel Water and the Sewer. The Western Parallel Water, actually, it was initially when we were, had done our final draft, or almost final draft of our CIP, we're trying to transmit water from the south end of the county to the north end of the county. We're really trying to get it to Hudson Ridge Road, over to Flipping, up to Walt Stevens Road. Eventually, we've got to build more storage up there due to demands. So what we did when we learned more about the Western Parallel Connector, we decided, okay, if there's development coming over on the west side of the road, we might as well just move that water line over to the Western Parallel Connector. It's going to serve the same purposes, but there's no urgent need for us to do that project. We can wait until whenever that road is done.
So does the Water Authority typically run sewer lines without, on private property, without?
No, sir.
Without the, the property owners being involved to, to help them pay for that?
Not typically. Typically, there's a development agreement that is reached between the Water Authority and a developer if it is a development of magnitude that has to meet certain criteria. The reason this project's on there, again, is because of the BUND refinance that was done in late 2000, early 2021, which is why that sewer project is on here.
So the property owners are going to get the, going to get the advantage of using the sewer line without having to pay for the sewer line?
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
But all other developers in the county have to pay for their sewer line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, that, that part I'm not, I'm not, I'm not agreeing with. So if all other developers are paying for the sewer line, I think any developers on the Western Parallel should be paying for their own.
Well, I, I believe we are obligated at this point to do it, I understand.
So, so Tony, you said that we, we passed a resolution with regards to the Western Parallel, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Chair Herrell, we also passed it because we had businesses that were already in that area that had no sewer, no, what was it, sewer that they were out of?
They didn't have no sewer.
They were pumping sewer out of a truck, and there was no access for the business, the existing businesses that are already there to get to the sewers, which they have moved and closed down.
That's correct, yes.
Sure have. Okay, so we have a resolution on the floor. Commissioner Wilson, did you have another question?
Yes, now, you said we had a resolution, that we passed a resolution for this?
Yeah, we passed a resolution and back when, and, and maybe, David, you can, it was with regards to the BUND financing, that if we, if the Water Authority was allowed to do the BUND refinancing, then the savings from that BUND, a portion of those funds would be utilized for the Western Parallel Parkway. Now, I, I remember that resolution specifically because at the time I was on the Water Authority Board. I was not on this board, and the only way that you all would do the, the only way that the, that the previous board would do the refinancing is that every district, I think, got some, some funding.
That is correct. It did not specify a project. It was each district commissioner was going to receive a certain dollar amount, I believe over five years or 10 years. Help me, Tony, I can't remember. It wasn't...
There was not a timeframe on it, but that dollar amount was $325,000 for each district, which turned out to be roughly half of the BUND refinance savings. And Commissioner Wilson, to your point, I don't believe the language about the Western Parallel Connector was written into the, or maybe it was as far as what the county adopted, but as far as what the Water Authority adopted, here's a cover letter that I held from Mr. Farmer at the time, dated January 5th, 2021, that has the Water Authority's commitment in here to the board that we would do the Western Parallel Connector water and sewer, and I'll be glad to share that, or we can throw it up here if you'd like.
Can you put, can you reread it, read that portion? Can you put it, can you re-read it, read that portion?
The Authority Program System Improvements into its Capital Improvement Plan, on December the 9th, 2020, Roderick Birch provided you with the Authority's 2015 CIP. The Authority is presently working on a proposed five-year CIP update to the 30-year CIP. This 2020 plan has yet to be presented to the Authority Board, but will be soon. As part of these, those planning efforts, the Authority has committed to include the CIP projects for both water and sanitary sewer services along the connector for the service area described above. To expedite service in this particular area, we will need the county to include water and sewer line easements in the right-of-way acquisition for the new roadway. The planning schedule for these CIP projects will mimic the planning schedule for the proposed Western Parallel Connector Road project. And I can throw this on the overhead and I, it's, it's a, it's rather lengthy, but, um, I can throw it on the overhead if you'd like.
What was the date on that letter?
January the 5th, 2021.
So how was you gonna pay for that in January 5th, when you put that, when that letter was, because these funds that we've received in ARPA funds, we didn't get those funds until the 1st of June, it was approved. But you said that letter was written at the 1st of the year, so how was y'all planning on paying for it before the funds come available?
Um, we, we were gonna have to find the funding to pay for it, uh, from the bond savings. Um, half of the bond savings of the refinance goes to the authority and the other half went to the commissioner's district. Each commissioner got half of those funds. So just like any other system improvement projects that comes up, we've got a CIP and each time it comes up, we look at it, we look at our financial model and we try to find where, where we need to get the money from. But we had not voted on this particular project for a dollar amount at this time.
That's all I have.
Okay. So, um, can, I, I guess I wanna understand what the project list is. Um, I know, Tony, you and I have had, um, several conversations with regards to, um, the water authority, um, receiving ARPA funds. And so of the, this proposal that, uh, this resolution that we have before us is 7.3 million?
Yes, ma'am.
And so does that consist of the projects that's on Exhibit B and Exhibit A, which are there certain projects that have been selected from each list, I guess?
My- My preference for the 7.3 million, if that's what you all choose to grant to the water authority, uh, the, the projects that are on the, um, Exhibit A list, the Western Parallel, Highway 20, Highway 81, we're, we're already doing those projects, those, those are started anyway. So, um, my, my preference, to make things easier, to David's point of, um, each of these projects having to follow the Davis Bacon and, uh, all those requirements of, my preference would be to allow us to use that 7.3 million dollars towards the Walnut Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant. I believe that would be in the best interest of Henry County, Henry County rate pairs, and it would be the easiest to track. So that would be my request. These projects that are on this current list here, um, all of these projects here, the only project on this current list that the water authority would do whether or not we got this here funding would be the North Ola Road, uh, waterline replacement because the six-inch line is undersized and it's in need of, of enlargement. So that would be my preference. If we got a, if, if we end up doing all of these projects having to meet that criteria, there's some additional expense that would have to be made on this small grouping of projects.
So a, a lot of the projects may or may not fit according to what the guidelines are?
I, I believe they will all fit the guidelines. I will have to work with our attorney, work with David's office and, and Roderick, and we'll make sure that they conform to those requirements, um, 'cause we've not spent any money on any of these, so there's no danger of supplanting on, on these. And the same with the Walnut Creek Plant, we just, um, awarded that project last month.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm just trying to understand, we had two lists that were presented to us, Exhibit A and, and Exhibit B, um, that was based on, I guess, conversations that you had with the district commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
But you're saying that the 7.3 million would better benefit the Walnut Creek?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, I guess the question would be then, from this standpoint, would the water authority still be able to, um, do the projects that are on Exhibit A and B, whether you receive ARPA funds or not?
We will do the projects that, all the projects on Exhibit A. We will do the first project here on Exhibit B. I will have to consult with our CFO on Projects 2 through 5.
Okay.
To invest in anything above Eagles Landing Parkway? 'Cause the, 'cause you just said those last two are optional?
I, I didn't say they were optional. I, I, I really guess all of them are optional, 2 through 5, as far as system improvements, things that the water authority has to do to maintain its system. So if you all choose, y'all have the funding, y'all tell me which projects y'all want the authority to do and we will do them.
Yeah, there needs to be more investment specifically in sewer in the northern part of the county. I mean, all the investment over the last couple of years have been going south and there is no money being invested on the north side and the citizens up there pay taxes too.
Yes, sir, you, you were very clear with that when we met, which is why I put those projects on this list. So if this is the list that you all choose for us to build the projects off of, if you all want to allocate the 7.3 towards this list, the projects will do, uh, as many of these projects as, as we can.
So, Tony, are you saying that the 7.3 will do A and B because you guys are already committed to doing A?
We're already gonna do A.
So if we do 7.3, then both A and B will be done?
So, I mean, because this is what I can support is the exhibits on A and B. Um, I know the issues that we've had at Anvil Block and Fairview, uh, just the, 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 um, agreement that we have with the CAB, issues that we've had with, um, water flow and sewer, uh, dealing with the CAB County. And so, uh, I can support the, the, the list here, uh, A and B, uh, with, it, it, it's the 7.3 million. I think that we should go, go that direction, so I, I would like to call for a motion.
Motion, yes, sir.
To, to do, to do this, okay.
So the motion is to do, um, A and B with the 7.3, um, that is in collaboration with what you guys are already spending for A?
Yes. However, we will not be able to do all of these projects. This totals 8.1, we're talking about 7.3, so they're made-
Eight thousand, eight million, eight million. So you need 8 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that instead of the 7.3, that we would do the 8,155,915 and invest in the water and sewer throughout the county, 'cause this covers all of the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and that the water authority would be authorized, that will be expected to do both List A and B.
Yes.
That's the motion, Chair Orell. Chair, did you all get it?
I rescind my motion.
We, we got it. Oh, thank you.
Okay, um, David?
Second.
Okay, okay, so you got, okay. So we got a first and, I mean, a first and a second. We tied, child. Commissioner Wilson, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On the item number three, we've got countywide, uh, waterline extensions, and the purpose that we, that we're doing this is to provide people that's been, everyone's been paying the two-mill water tax for all these years that don't have water. And also give some hydrants with, for life safety, fire safety type, uh, situations as well, 'cause these people live in these, these districts without water, they're paying an additional homeowners insurance increase. With, um, if our department only has one tanker truck to provide water to these, to these citizens, I think we need to pull the 1.6 million dollars off the Western Parallel Water Line and apply it to the, to everyone that needs water for these purposes, to extend, to extend our water lines to service as many people as we can in the county.
So the countywide waterlines extension, the 4.1 million, that would encompass what you're talking about, Commissioner Wilson?
Include all of them. That's just, that's just the ones that he has a criteria of servicing, number of parcels, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So that don't include all the roads without water? It just includes the ones that has, and, I think, was it 12, was you cut off?
Yes. That's a little tough to read, but this here is the breakdown of the different roads in the county that meets the criteria, roughly about 29 parcels per mile with the exception of two or three on there, which would also be system improvements, but the majority of the roads that do not have waterline are in District One, that's the, the first list up there, it looks like it's about seven projects. And then there was, uh, there's a couple in District Two, uh, and, and these are based on the new commissioner districts. District Three, there's one, there's, there was none that met the criteria for District Four, and there's a few there in District Five.
So, but this don't include all the roads in the county without water?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay. So do you have that prostate?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay.
We, 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 we can talk about extending the ro- uh, water on all the roads in the county if y'all wanna have a conversation about extending the two-mill tax beyond 2030.
I think that we probably need to have a conversation extending waterlines to every, every resident that's, that's out there that don't have water and don't put waterlines on road where nobody lives.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what my recommendation would be, to pull the money out of the Western Parallel Water Lines and put it toward the waterlines that we need on roads that people live on without water source.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I wanna make sure that the board understands that we do not support anything beyond that 7 million dollars. Uh, we need to sit down and go over the project list. One of the things, and, and Mr. Cornell can attest to this, that we had a conversation about as he was preparing this list, is we have a recreational center in District Two that is currently on septic, that we have asked the water authority to include as part of this project list, because if we're talking countywide, we need to be looking specifically at what's going to impact the county. We are trying to get them to commit funding so that we can take the soccer complex that backs up every weekend that there is a major tournament off of septic. We have a new recreational center that's going in that same location that we have to get off septic and get on sewer. So if we are looking to increase this amount, what I would ask is that that specific project be listed as an additional project on the project list. Second, in our conversation with Mr. Cornell about this project list, what I understood is that they were going to match the county's commitment. So if they match the county's commitment, then all the projects can get completed. And so I think that's what the resolution needs to state, that in addition to the 7.2 that the county's gonna commit, the water authority will commit the balance and then Attachment A and B will be completed. So I just wanna make sure that you all have that information.
So do we need to bring this back, Sherri?
I, I don't like just throwing things out here. We need to know specifically what we're doing.
That's correct.
I know that Tony has already obligated some funds. I do need to get with our county attorney, get an opinion on that, um, because what I wanna make sure is that we're not having to pay money back to the federal government because the county is on the hook for these funds.
That's correct.
So I do not object to the water authority receiving ARPA funds, but we've got to make sure that we are following the federal law-
That's right.
And we've gotta make sure that the projects that are listed, every commissioner can feel like they have accommodated their requests. And I think if we're presenting Attachment A and B, and that's what the board wants, then we commit part and the water authority commits the other part. Because ultimately, these are projects, I believe Mr. Cornell said, that was, some are a part of their capital improvement plan. So they're just gonna have to readjust some things to get those projects completed, so that we can say to the public, we are utilizing ARPA funds for countywide projects.
Okay, so Commissioner-
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I would like to rescind the motion and ask that the board would table this agenda item, allow staff to work with Mr. Cornell, to put all of the projects that we need to have on there, not removing any projects, but adding to and getting the commitment from the water authority of their portion of the projects.
Sherri, I did prepare for that project you mentioned. I failed to get to it, but this is the sewer line extension that she mentioned. Uh, this is the Mount Carmel Park-
Yes.
-sewer line extension of approximately 4,400 feet. There's also some water irrigation, domestic irrigation water has to be separated and I did have staff to run some very quick costs on this and we're looking at around $660,000 for this project. And we just got a request the other day in writing, I know we talked about it, but the, um, the police precinct on Highway 42, you all requested for us to get sewer service to that and we've not had an opportunity to look at that and gather any pricing.
Thank you.
So I, I think that we need to go on, we're gonna, Commissioner Clemens has, has, has rescinded her motion. Um, let's get together and sit down and really look at countywide projects, uh, so that we can make sure that we are serving our residents the best, that, the best way that we can with the ARPA funds that we do have. And, uh, we'll bring this back. Is, is November 29th too soon?
No, ma'am, we wanna, we wanna move-
Okay.
Because our time is ticking in terms of utilizing those funds.
Okay, all right then. So we'll, we'll table this until the November 29th meeting and put it back on the agenda at that time.
And Madam Chair, can, uh, since we've heard it, staff could just bring it back? If you trust Sherri, can just get it done and-
Bring it back.
No presentation-
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do right now currently is that we have to go into executive session.
Can you, can you, I'll be your authority.
County Attorney.
Come on now.
What is she saying?
Clemens, a motion?
Okay, so Commissioner-
Make a motion to table it and, uh, that staff would just bring back the presentation for the vote.
Okay, can we get a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries.
We did put that nothing would be removed.
Yeah, we're just gonna bring everything back, okay? Uh, we need to go into executive session.
So, Madam Chair, you're gonna come back and finish those items that you've scheduled?
Yeah, we will come back and finish those items, but we need to go into executive session, um, for real estate. And we will come back, uh, into open section, session, uh, after that. Okay, I need, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Both are approved.
Okay, got a first and a second, all in favor. Okay.
I'll be interrupting your-
No, it's no problem.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Can I like to make a motion to reconvene?
Motion reconvene.
Is that correct, Stephanie? Okay. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I also am going to have to do an amendment to the agenda to add a real estate item if we can get the county manager to come up and present.
My apologies, Madam Chair. So, we are amending the agenda to add the item for the purchase of real property. As a reminder, the board did hear from myself and our county attorney during the last meeting regarding a tract of land located at 12 North Zackin Parkway. This, what we're asking the board to do is to approve the purchase of this property to also include the adjacent parking lot. And just for the record and for the clerk, the parcel identification numbers are M-19-05009000 and M-19-05011000.
Okay, and the purpose of the purchase of this particular property is for?
Court functions. We are looking to relocate the district attorney's office in our probate court.
Okay, so we do have our district attorney and our probate judge here. Could you guys come forward and tell us, tell the public what the needs are for your specific offices?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair and Board. We have needed extra space in probate court for a long time, and we appreciate the board hearing our needs. So first of all, probate court has been traveling to borrow courtrooms for about nine years now. We gave up our courtroom space to make office space for our employees because we thought back in 2013 it was going to be a temporary situation, but it hasn't worked out to be that way. When we travel to other courtrooms, it's just not safe and it's just not very efficient. I have to take my staff with me, my associate judge does too. We have to carry all of our computers, our file stamps, the files with us, everything. So we also had real trouble with parking. We have seventeen spaces for the public at our current facility, which is just not adequate. We have tried to allow people to schedule appointments, which helps tremendously, but we still need more. This facility would give us drive-through access, which would be very convenient for the public who are coming by to request certain documents. They may not get it right away, but at least they could request what they needed, and we could text them when it was time to come back and the paperwork was available. We don't have sprinklers in our current building, which makes it unsafe. We're not ADA compliant, and we don't have a family restroom. And a family restroom is something that we could build in this new space and something that would be tremendously useful for the people who are incapacitated that we serve. So, thank you for your consideration.
Okay. DA?
Well, good afternoon, Chair and Board. The DA's office has a space issue. At the courthouse where we are currently, we have employees, staff, that are doubling up in office space. We have investigators sharing office space. We have attorneys having to use communal space. So if this property is made available to us, we would use it to house not only staff. We need about sixteen offices for individuals, but we also need conference space as well as space for filing. And this space, we've done a walkthrough of it on several occasions. There was some time, over a year ago, we looked at this space when there was a leasing opportunity. We've went, I've gone in there as recently as last week. We went Friday just to do another walkthrough with facilities and maintenance. We believe the space is available and would be a good use for us. Our plan would be to put our Crimes Against Children, Domestic Violence Unit in that space as well as some of our juvenile staff because we just have additional space needs.
Okay, thank you so much. So, Commissioner Thomas.
Madam Chair, I want to move forward and make a motion that we purchased this building. We have an awesome DA department, we have an awesome judge standing before us. I have personally been in their spaces, watching them trying to operate and serve this county, and it is almost ridiculous. I want to thank you for your services, first of all, and being patient with the different boards that have come before the county to try to resolve this problem. Madam Chair, this is a great investment for the county. As stated, this building will allow us, as we grow, if necessary, we can upgrade them when we get our judicial center and still use that building for another purpose because it's so well-located, it does have parking, and we're buying additional parking for it as well. So my motion is for this board to put forth, to approve a motion today to purchase this building.
So I got a motion, can I get a second?
Parking lot, do we?
I cannot hear you.
We just need to make sure she's adding the adjoining parking lot to that motion, please.
Okay, add the joint parking lot to the motion.
In addition to the motion of purchasing the building, I'm also requesting we buy the adjoining parking lot with that purchase.
Okay, and that purchase amount is county manager?
Purchase cost is two million dollars.
Okay, the purchase amount is two million dollars.
With the purchase amount of two million dollars.
Got it.
So we got a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor. Commissioner Wilson?
I hear the needs from my DA, I hear the needs from my probate judge, Judge Powell. But if we had the fire chief out here, we'd hear his needs. Police, police chief would hear his needs. We could bring state court judges, we'd listen to their needs, the Superior Court judges. So everyone needs space, every single department needs space. My struggle is, who needs it first? What is the priority of these facilities, and who gets it first? And everyone, and I say everyone, the fire police, state, Superior Court, all those, they need space. But who gets the space first? That's my, that's my struggle. Who, we need to prioritize who gets what first. And I don't have anything to go on other than, of course, I've spoke to the DA and Judge Powell in the last several years, and of course, they stated a case. And I have visited both, both facilities. But there's a lot more needs out there as well, so I'm just, I struggle who gets what first.
And Commissioner Wilson, you are right. We have a lot of needs in the county. This county has grown at a faster pace than previous leadership has kept up with. And so, has the fire department brought us a presentation as to identify a property, as to where their new training facility would go, and the cost of that? Yes, all of our departments need space. And as soon as they bring something forth to us, then we have to, again, determine and figure out how we will, what a best- determine and figure out how we will, what best accommodate them. But right now, what we have before us is the district attorney and the probate judge has, we have identified a space to address their needs. As we identify spaces to address other county needs, then that will be brought before the board and we can make a determination as well as to how we will accommodate those departments. But right now, we have a motion on the floor with a second. Those that are in favor in moving forward with purchasing this building for our judicial, our court services, all in favor. Those that are opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to a planning and zoning matter that we have on the agenda, ULDC dash AM dash twenty-two dash zero eight. This is for discussion only.
Chair?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Can you go back and approve the affidavit and resolution for executive session before we move on?
Okay. I need to get a, do a motion for that? Stephanie?
Yes, please. An approval for the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the affidavit for executive session?
Move to approve the affidavit for executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board members, citizens of Henry County and Board. This ordinance, ULDC amendment, is for discussion only. This is an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend the Unified Land Development Code of the Henry County Code of Ordinance to allow for wineries with or without vineyards under section four point three zero zero of the ULDC and to amend section twelve point zero two point zero six point five, limitation on number of special events. On this slide, we have drafted three parts to this ordinance. Part one is section two point zero three point zero three, which will add vineyards with or without wineries to the permitted use table. Part two, section four point zero three point three six, will add a supplemental use standards for vineyards with or without wineries. And part three, section twelve point zero two point zero six I point five, will remove the five special event per year limit for event facilities in the RA zoning district. This slide shows the addition of vineyards with or without wineries in the permitted use table. It will be placed underneath the lodges and event facility use. That's already on the chart. The next three slides will show what staff has drafted for supplemental standards specifically for vineyards with or without wineries. Part A will read as shown on the screen. What is important to note here is that vineyards will be permissible by right in the RA zoning district. If a vineyard wants to operate a winery, at the same time, they will need to obtain a conditional use from the zoning advisory board. Part B will also read as shown on the screen. This section details the functions specifically for vineyards with wineries. It is important to note that staff thought it best to treat wineries as special event facilities. This would offer vineyards extra income and can, in theory, become an economic driver for Henry County. Part C of the ordinance, which isn't right here, simply states that the wineries must meet commercial building standards. And part D, which is what will be the, the standards for vineyards with wineries and without. The table, so I'll just take a second to go over this table. So, the minimum site area right now for lodges and event facilities is three acres. So, we built on that original chart from event facilities to create this chart. So, for a vineyard without a winery, it would only be required to have two acres. But if they want to do a winery use or special event use, then they'll need three acres. The minimum lot width will be two hundred feet. The setback would be seventy-five feet. We have buffer requirements, we have building designs. The building will need to go through approval of planning and zoning in the building and plan review departments. And this is specifically for all the materials, whether it's a winery or just a vineyard. Considering that if, if this recommendation is approved, the zoning advisory board would also have a say-so in the design as they have to go through the zoning advisory board to get that approval for a winery specifically. We have standards here that should limit nuisance issues. And I'll go back up quickly. This chart, well, this, this page will be in the ULDC. We did take this to various departments such as code enforcement, task commissioner, fire department, just to get their input. So these are some of the rules that the vineyards with wineries specifically will have to follow. So I'll just let you take a look at that for a second. While you look at that, the last piece of this ordinance, oh, and we do plan on taking this chart here. And these are enhanced standards from what's in the event facility and lodge ordinance now. We're going to add a lot of these standards to the, the event facility chart as well to enhance those standards. And the last thing, section twelve point zero two point zero six I. If you remember, in April of twenty seventeen, there was a ULDC amendment seventeen oh three, which placed a limitation of five special events for special event facilities within the RA zoning district. This limitation essentially made special event facilities in the RA zoning district unfeasible. Staff intends to highlight one of Henry County's biggest assets, which is our rural and agricultural beauty, by removing this limitation to increase tourism potential. So right now, the way that that limitation works, a couple of things are happening. One, we can't, it's basically unfeasible. Someone wants to do an event facility, they have a big farm, they want to do weddings or birthday parties. You can only do it five times a year, by the law. What else is happening is, some of these event facilities are circumventing us anyway and doing as many events as they want. So it's kind of no teeth in it. And I think now in twenty twenty-two, staff does see value in having those event facilities that can highlight, you know, our rural and agricultural use. So, other than that, I think that's all of the changes. We'll probably beef it up just a little bit more in between now and when we bring it back to vote. I would encourage anyone that has questions or concerns to please reach out to us before we get to the next meeting so we can address those and make any changes you'd like to see. But I think this would be a good thing for Henry County. And with that, I will, he, in the rest of my time, and I will take any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the board? This is just a discussion item.
Is this, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's discussion only so I can get with staff in reference to it. I would just disagree that this is an enhancement completely of the standards because there were some things that were lowered, like three acres to two acres if you don't have a vineyard. I think it should be three acres all the way around. The reason we did the event venue down to five the last time is because residents were complaining that they bought into agricultural residential areas and people were turning those, investors was coming in, buying it and turning it into event facilities. So I do have a lot of stuff written down that I will get to staff and then you guys can bring it back. Part of it was the, you know, if you don't have a vineyard, you can go down to two acres and have a event space. That's not, we should leave it at three. And then the twenty feet size, if there's a vineyard or no vineyard, but forty feet size, just make it forty standards and I'll just give everything. That's just a little bit of some of the stuff. Also signage, signage is not there. That way, when people move in, they already know that that's a event venue space, that's a winery. And I don't see signage addressed here either. So I'll just get with you and give you all of this stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you for your feedback. Wilson, thank you.
Commissioner Clemens was talking about the five event was minimized due to the amount of traffic on the small acreage on the venue. So I'm not sure that the three acres is where we need to be. It may be at six or eight. So you wouldn't be disturbing your neighbors when you have these events on a regular basis. So, I'll be talking to staff on that as well, but I think we need to increase that to where you will not be disturbing your neighbors.
Okay.
So in the, in the spirit of discussion, I think I should note that vineyards are already allowed. They're agricultural use. But with the wineries, that's what we want to increase the buffers on, so.
Yeah, well, the other thing you didn't do is define vineyards. And that has to be done because anybody can buy some land and say this is now vineyard. And so we got to make sure that we put some stipulations in that that the state allows us to do because the state has their agricultural piece. But then the county can also implement more things for our county to say if it's a vineyard, then you've been growing for so long, you're selling to somebody. Like, what is a vineyard? Just because you've got pecan trees, you're a vineyard?
Okay, so.
I can't read to my privacy, but I don't think I'm called a vineyard.
So Commissioner Wilson and Clemens, I will let y'all lead the charge on that. Y'all get with staff. And I'll give them additional recommendations. And when it come back before the board, it will be a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you so much. County attorney, we have a resolution rescinding objection to the city of Stockbridge annexation. And this is the property that was located on forty-two, forty-two around Jodico. I think this was a project that you were involved in, Commissioner Thomas. Is that it? Yes, okay.
Okay, I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible. I realize it's in the last item on the calendar. So, as the Chair just indicated, this is a resolution to rescind the objection to the city of Stockbridge annexation. This originally, this property originally came before the board on July the nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Southern Crescent, McDonough, Georgia, was accident re-zoned the property from office institutional to mixed use for property located at twenty-one twenty-five Highway forty-two. The board actually approved the, approved the resolution, the change of property to the mixed use. The board included several conditions, I believe it was twenty, twenty-four conditions in all. Thereafter, on August the twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two, the county received a notice from the city of Stockbridge advising their intent to annex that same property. And after discussion among the board, the board decided that it would actually object to, that it would actually object to the annexation. And that was based on the fact that the board thought it would be unduly burdensome on the county. They have a fire marshal, but the county would have to actually provide services in the area. And we actually sent that objection to the city of Stockbridge. After sending the objection to the city of Stockbridge, I reached out to the city of Stockbridge's attorney, Mr. Washington, after the planning and zoning director reached out to the city of Stockbridge, his counterpart in the city of Stockbridge. What they had advised us is that they would adopt the majority of the conditions that are, that was included in the, the conditions used, included when the board approved the mixed use. So, all of those are included. They would still be limited to doing a hundred units on the property. The total, excuse me, the total number of dwelling units will be limited to a hundred units. The subject property would not be, at any time, be developed as a traditional single-family and/or multifamily residential development or any other type of residential community that does not require each single-family attached or detached unit to the house. An individual who requires a level of care that is provided by the assisted living facility. The dwelling units would be required to be craftsman style as approved by the community development department. And those were all provisions that were inside of the actual conditions approved by the board of commissioners. And I'm not going to go through all of them because like I indicated earlier, there's twenty-two. What I'm going to talk to you about is what they would not include. And what they wouldn't include is they are, the conditions they don't approve of that the board suggested when they changed the property from office institutional to mixed use is number eleven of the board's condition, which is that no more than fifteen percent of the homes shall be rented out at any time. Condition number twelve of the board of commissioners, that only the management of the owners' operators of the existing rehabilitation center or assisted living facility of the subject property, per current public tax records, would be able to rent out the dwelling property. The dwelling units shall be limited to condominium units. They did not want to include that provision. The dwelling units shall be limited to units with two or three bedrooms. Each dwelling unit shall have a minimum of two full bathrooms. They did not want to agree to that condition. And each permitted home in the development shall be compatible with existing homes as determined by the planning and zoning department. Obviously, it would not be the county's planning and zoning department, so they did not include that. But like I indicated earlier, they did say that they would, one of the conditions they would impose is that it be craftsman, craftsman home. The last condition, and this is just a comparison, the condition that the county requested, condition twenty-one, is that four of the dwelling units shall be reserved for those leaving the care of assisted living, needing a transition living arrangement. No permits of any kind shall be approved unless all four of these transitional living units are included. What the city of Stockbridge is willing to do as to condition number twenty-two, is they modified it, they said it would be an adequate number of dwelling units shall be reserved for those leaving the care of assisted living who are needing transitional living arrangements. We believe, and this is working with planning and zoning, that if the board, excuse me, if the city of Stockbridge adopts the resolution as they indicated, one through nineteen, that would address the concerns of the board of commissioners regarding the issues with the fire marshals based on the fact that it's still limited to a hundred, a hundred units. There would be a craftsman style, which was one of the other concerns. And it wouldn't necessarily be a detriment to the county having to fund these additional units. Although, there's obviously, they don't want to do the provision regarding the rental property or limiting the amount of rental. But other than that, it would be the same. The resolution as written, what it would allow for is the actual objection to be rescinded after they have already actually approved the conditions. They were going to put it on the earlier calendar, but they have not. And as I've seen, they haven't put it on the calendar yet. So this way, the resolution allows them to act and then after they act, we can withdraw objections. So, if there are any questions?
Yeah, can you go back to the, the slide before this one here?
Okay.
Can you explain to me what the, the reasons for the objections are? Are they fifteen percent of the homes shall be rented out? No more than fifteen percent of the homes should be rented out at any time. So what was their objection to this?
They didn't actually say why they objected to this. This was just a, a provision that they didn't want to include. I don't, it's not my understanding that it's going to be a completely rental property. And unfortunately, the director's not here today, so I can ask him. But my understanding is they just didn't want to include the provisions that included limitations on rentals.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Thomas?
Chair, I would like just to bring back to your attention that we had extended conversations about this. And this is a brain trauma center that wanted to expand. And to expand, one of the things we put in there that they would have transitional living facilities. Transitional living facility means they're going to help these patients become independent. And we had it even designed where they would transition from one level to another level until they get, until they are independent. That's one of the reasons we worked so very hard with this organization. They assured us that would happen. In addition to that, the other living facilities were targeted age restricted because again, we're working for medical community here. So we had a targeted age restriction on those other living facilities. If we leave this open, we're going to have a big old apartment back there, and apartment units, and we're backed up to two very nice subdivisions. I think it's the Summit sit across the street. And I'm trying to think of the other one that starts on Eagles Landing Parkway, but it comes around to forty-two. Something, but they're very nice subdivisions. And this board has been very, very good on trying to make sure we protect property values. We make sure we have complementary buildings in the areas. And this would have done it the way we put those stipulations there. And this would have done it the way we put those stipulations there. In addition to there, there's a one-way in and a one-way out. And that one-way in and one-way out is not the best entry now. We mandated that this organization or this company, whoever they are, build that second entry to the back because we needed it for fire, we needed it for safety, and because we're working with senior citizens and trauma victims, we needed to protect them and have access to them immediately. The way this property is designed, it goes down almost in a hole. That's it. If we don't have that second entry to the back, we are proposing, I hate to call it death trap, but we are proposing an opportunity of not being able to adequately serve those citizens in that area. And I'm very concerned. We kept this rental thing because again, this is a targeted living area and we're working with people going through rehabilitation, who will be slower, who needs patience, who need an opportunity to grow into independence. So I see no reason why this organization or company is looking for this annexation except for, I think we had about forty-six stipulations on this, more. Except for to escape some of the things that we are trying to make sure we put in place to protect property values, to protect citizens, to make sure fire and safety has access to these citizens. We did a lot because of the way this property is designed. So with that, Madam Chair, I still object to this. I feel like there's more to it than just, we want to be in Stockbridge. As much as I can, I'm going to protect citizens. I'm going to protect, protect these medical victims who may have to be going through trauma. I'm going to try and make sure fire and safety has access to our citizens to protect them. I don't see a reason for this. And I'm wondering, what is underlying the corporate here? What is happening? That they feel that they have to get themselves from under the stipulation that the county had put forth and maybe go to an area that they do not have to abide by? Some concern, Madam Chair.
So I guess one of the things that I would have been looking for is, in these objections, the reasons why the, the City of Stockbridge is object, because it's the City of Stockbridge that's objecting to these conditions. And I want to know the reason why for each one of these conditions that they are objecting to. The other thing is that I think a portion, and I may be wrong, I think a portion of the property or something that they're acquiring is already in the City of Stockbridge.
That's correct.
Am I correct?
Yes, a part of the property is already in the City of Stockbridge.
Okay. And so a por, a portion of the property is in the county?
That's correct.
Okay. And so they are trying to annex everything into the city because of the development that they want to do on the property that's already in the city limits?
That's correct, yes.
And so their reasoning is because it makes their financing better? You can get financed whether you're in the city or the county. So I think that that's a lame excuse. But I am with Commissioner Thomas on this.
Well, I would like to suggest that we then table this item to give you an opportunity to go back to talk to the city attorney and the Director of Planning and Zoning to talk to his counterpart to see if we can work out some of these objections at the Board. Just not see a reason at this time to withdraw our objection.
Okay.
Madam Chair, particularly the fire and safety concerns, the additional road that was required to be put in the back of this facility. At that time, it was estimated at one million dollars. I'm quite sure it's gone up since that time period. They agreed to pay the one million dollar investment if we approved that, this, this development at that point in time. So I do have concerns. So thank you.
Yeah, so can you make a motion, Commissioner Clemens?
Nancy, you said that you made a suggestion that the city would go ahead and adopt the conditions that they're gonna adopt on the other part first?
Right, before we actually rescinded our objections, because they did not have this item on their calendar yet to adopt it. And we don't have anything in place to actually make them adopt.
Objection, right.
Yeah. So what I proposed in the resolution was to actually, once they actually adopt the conditions, then we withdraw our objections.
Right.
So that we can ensure that the conditions are actually completed.
Yeah, I would like to see what they are approving on their part of the land so that, that may be grounds for us to be able to say it doesn't meet the continuity based on what they're doing. So I don't know what they're doing either. So just, I, I think that's a good suggestion as well.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to know more about what is being proposed on the land that's already in the City of Stockbridge.
Well, when the original development included everything, so we did see it originally.
What they were gonna do on the Stockbridge land? What was it?
It was extend the housing for a target living facility.
Well, we need to see them writing because they have an document.
I agree. We do need more information.
Okay, so can you make a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to table this item until we get additional information.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, public comments?
Chair, we have one person left on public comments, Angie Collins, to speak about the car wash ordinance.
Okay, all right. If Ms. Collins will come forward, please. State your name. Okay. Then I, okay. You ready?
I need to go back to the annexation request. It was at the beginning of the agenda. I think Commissioner Clemens asked for us to table that and bring it back. We have forty-five days, so we're gonna have to have a special call meeting to act on this. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that. The Chair, her role is gonna need to call for a special call meeting so that we can provide a response by.
So, so Sherri, there was no, we could, Nancy needs to advise, because we could just do the objection to it now.
Then I would suggest that because we received it on October seventh. And we have a forty-five day requirement, so we have to notify the city by Monday, November twenty-first.
Okay, okay. I would like to make a motion, Board, Chair and Board, that we object to the two hundred and seventy-eight acres being annexed out of the county into the City of Stockbridge.
So got, got a motion and a second. Okay, okay, all right. Motion carries. So that helps you get what you need to get done, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. I need to get a motion to approve the minutes from the September twentieth Board meeting and the October fourth Board meeting. Got a motion? Can I get a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Upcoming meetings, our November fifteenth BLC meeting has been canceled. Our next meeting will take place on November the twenty-ninth at nine a.m. And it is a regular BLC meeting taking place for the first meeting in December. We've already had the executive session. Our meeting is adjourned.